Right, well, at 7:04, and I think we ought to get started. Debbie, would you please call the meeting to order a note of attendance?
Noted.
Thank you. We will begin with the flag salute. Debbie, is that ready by chance? If not, we can.
Sorry, I lost it. Oh, here it comes. Sorry, I'm having trouble.
I can get it for you, Deb.
Thank you. I see it.
All right, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. One nation.
Under God. Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Well, first up on our agenda tonight is our agenda review. And if anybody has any changes they'd like to make now is the correct time to do so.
I would like to make a motion. I would like to amend the agenda to remove all of the policies that are first reads so that they might be reviewed further by the policy work group and then considered at a future boardwork session.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion that we'd like to have on this before proceeding to a vote?
I can give some explanation as to why I made my motion. So there were several policies that were pretty elaborate. They had a lot of attachments. It was a lot to go over. And I felt like we didn't have enough context necessarily for us to really consider them. And from what I understand, I think the work group need a little bit more time with them as well. They're all, they're just inundated. So because we could probably consider them at the next work session, we don't lose too much time. And it lets them really go over them, but so that by the time the board sees them, we can be pretty confident that they've been really vetted. I think it's just going to save a lot of time so that we don't feel like we're going through them kind of word by word. We can know that they've already been really, you know, thoroughly looked at.
Thank you, Janet. Yeah, the background information is helpful, and I agree. I think if we can have those, you know, fully vetted, especially the ones that relate to administrative policy and implementation details from an HR perspective, it's going to be better for us. So I tend to agree.
I. I agree with both of you. I believe that some of these just need a little bit more time for review. And it does need to be vetted and looked through. And so I would agree with both of you.
Okay. There's no other discussion. Debbie, would you call the vote on the motion?
Yes, Jonathan.
I vote yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Shelley?
Yes.
And Erv?
No.
That was a no, Erv? Six to one, the motion passes.
Okay, so we'll pick those up then likely at the work session in a couple of weeks. And we'll, we'll go from there. Those will be the, the first reading items tonight specifically.
Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect.
Okay. Anything else to discuss as far as the agenda goes before approving the remaining agenda?
Yeah, Jonathan, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, Tom?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to move that we, I'd like to make a motion considering that we pass a resolution encouraging the governor to lower the metrics for making it easier to reopen schools. For opening up. I'd want to have it on the next work session. Maybe we could work on it there for people to, I mean, I, it wouldn't be something that acknowledges that, that this pandemic is serious and real and acknowledges the good work that has been done in keeping the numbers down. But, but I, I think the cost is being bore, the cost to the kids is, is, is too high. And I think we need to open, open it up and maybe if there's, if the numbers need to be kept down, maybe there could be restrictions on the other parts of the economy. I don't know, but I just, I think the kids are suffering too much.
Okay, so the motion then on the floor is to discuss the idea of drafting a resolution to present to state level. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, Jonathan, I'm sorry, I should have had a better word.
Motion to discuss the item.
I'd like to discuss a resolution encouraging the lowering of, of the metric, of lowering the COVID metrics for easing the opening of schools. Does that sound okay?
Okay. So you're asking for a discussion item tonight, correct?
Yeah, well, I guess, yeah, I guess, yeah. Yeah, no one's here. Excuse me?
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify, this wasn't a request for an action tonight as much as to add a discussion item to talk about. A possible action.
You're right, right. Talk about it and then be prepared to talk about it at our next work session and hopefully, you know, I, maybe I could have a draft and we can bang it around.
Thank you. So.
I have no problem with discussion, but I, as long as we have a thorough discussion.
Jonathan, do we need a second? On his motion?
We do.
Second.
Now discussion.
Moved and seconded. Now we can add additional like before, before we vote on it.
Okay. I just would like to say that I didn't know that this was going to happen tonight. I, I was under the understanding that we were supposed to submit anything that we wanted to change for amending the agenda. Is that not correct? Or are we supposed to admit we're okay with that?
Agenda changes can occur. It was requested that it's possible you alert the superintendent and or the board chair prior, but it's not a requirement, Shelley.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it.
Yeah, maybe I should have, I'm sorry, maybe I should have added it at the, at the end for a suggested next topic, you know, an additional topic. But I'm, you know, if I did that improper, I apologize, but yeah.
No, you're perfectly in the right to suggest an amendment to the agenda. It's before and it'll keep happening from time to time.
So I'd like to just mention something really quick. I'm, I'm willing to have a discussion about it. I'm just not, I'm just not fully prepared with all of the percentages and numbers right in front of me. I would have to go back in and get all my work, you know, paperwork out. But I'm not opposed to having that be like an agenda item on maybe our work session in two weeks. That way we can prepare and have a really thorough discussion about that. And then coming up with a, a vote to do that. Is that, is that reasonable?
That's my intention, Shelley, not to have a discussion about the, the resolution. Just that let's have a discussion about getting that on, on the agenda for next meeting.
Oh, so a future agenda item?
Yes.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you for the clarification.
We, we can vote to, to have it as an agenda item and then table it once we get to that agenda item.
That's the way to do it. Yes, yes, that was the way to do it, yes.
And when it becomes a discussion item, that becomes the opportunity to discuss it more. So at this point, we should vote on whether we're going to amend the agenda. When we get to the discussion item, we can debate or discuss any of the other merits around it.
Can I make another?
Any more discussion?
We do have on our agenda now at the bottom, future agenda requests, future agenda item requests. I can't get it right. That be the proper place to put that, to request that maybe? To put that discussion on a future agenda or? You see, I'm just trying to make it as easy as possible to get that so we can talk about.
Impossible is to make it a discussion item because that's what's been motioned and seconded.
Okay.
Okay. With that, Debbie, would you please call the vote?
Jonathan?
I vote yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
And Erv? Thank you, all in favor.
We will add that to, well, I don't know exactly where it'll go. We just moved some of the discussion. So it'll be the, the last item in our discussion. Unless we'll work through all the ones that were on the agenda and then we'll do that one before we move on to the second public comment.
Okay.
All right. Now, are there any additional modifications to tonight's agenda? Or at any point I, we can also accept a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
I move to approve the agenda as modified.
Moved.
A second.
And seconded. Any further discussion on that? Not being any Debbie, please, if you'd call the vote again.
Jonathan?
I vote yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Lori?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Erv?
Yes.
Thank you, all in favor.
All right. Next up, we have our consent agenda. At this point, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to. Go ahead, Tom.
Jonathan, I moved.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Go ahead, Shelley, yeah. I'll second.
I just did.
I second it.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All right, Debbie, please.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Lori?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Erv?
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, very good. Next up, we have our superintendent report. And so Scott, you are up.
Well, thanks, Jonathan. And, and I'm going to give an update on, on where we are with our reopening plan. But before I do that, I wanted to make sure that I extend a heartfelt thank you to our classified staff. Dan and I have been visiting schools and have made it around each school to, to see classified employees in action with our kids in the Lippi program. And, and of course, I have a special place in my heart for classified employees because those are the most important adults that serve my own sons in a specialized program. And certainly I've seen both sides as a parent and as a principal and as a superintendent, just how important the work of our classified employees is. And I just wanted to make sure that I publicly thank each and every one of them. They play such a critical role in our, in our school district and the services we provide. And without them, we would not be able to provide the, the kind of services that, that we offer here in Silver Falls. So I also wanted to give Dan Bush a chance to say a few words if, if you would too, Dan.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. And do want to take an opportunity to thank our classified employees. I know, board members, you will be passing a resolution tonight to declare the first week in March, Classified Employee Appreciation Week. I know our classified employees just went through a selecting classified employees of the year. We cannot name those individuals because they get to be surprised at some point in the near future. And so that's, that's a real highlight for us to be able to, to show up at their worksite and surprise them with that. And, you know, this pandemic has hit all of us in different ways and hit, and hit, you know, different aspects of our workforce differently. But, you know, our classified folks have really stepped up in, in, in this situation. And if you go back to March, when this all started, March of 2020, really want to give a special shout out to our food service employees. They stepped in, have barely taken a break whatsoever since March to provide food for our community. They have added, they have added a supper program recently. They have, with the help of transportation, also Derek McElfresh, put together a delivery system for those families who could not make it down to the school sites. You know, our tech department who has shored up a lot of areas within, you know, with deployment of hotspots and other areas. Those are all the classified folks who have just done an amazing job. And, you know, most recently, our, our maintenance team getting our buildings, understanding the ventilation systems as we get ready to bring kids back to school. Just awesome. And these pictures you see there on the screen, you know, Scott and I were able to go around and visit all of our schools and, and take a look. And it was so inspiring to walk into some classrooms where there are classified educational assistants, special needs assistants, working one-on-one with kids. Some of them are, were on screen supporting kids in, in learning. Really, really inspiring. And so our hats are off to our classified, our classified folks. And we will definitely be honoring you that first week in March. So thank you.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and pull up my screen here. And if you can see that, if you could give me a thumbs up. All right. Okay, so I'm going to take you through sort of where we are, sort of what our challenges are and what we're focused on right now. And these will be updates that I'll continually bring every boardwork session and regular board meeting, just to update you on exactly where we are. And so, and again, I'm framing this around three questions. And, and within those three questions, the first one is where exactly we are. And I'm going to talk about advisory metrics and key dates and timelines that we have set. And then the major barrier that we're negotiating right now, which is the complexity around the high school. I want to make sure that I go with more detail on that. And then what the priorities are right now for us at the, at the district office and, and at the schools in terms of implementing safety blueprints and safety protocols, which is the most important priority right now. Before I get into that though, I want to remind everybody that's watching right now that when we reopen schools and students begin to return, that is to a hybrid model. So, and I'll continue to mention this at each presentation. I just think it's a, it's a good reminder that we're not back to normal where we're coming back to school five days a week. This will be in a hybrid model where students will come two full days a week. And the other three days, they will have learning activities connected to what they learn while they're at school. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're clear on that and that teachers who are teaching in the hybrid model will be teaching full time. And so even though each child will only be attending two days a week, they'll be teaching four days a week to, to different sets of kids. So just a friendly reminder, and, and I think it never hurts to mention it one more time. And I want to start off with where the metrics are right now. And I had to update these right before the meeting because they, the metrics, new metrics came out today. So if you look at the top for the return of K5, we're going with all of K5 returning and the adjusted metrics was cases less than 350 per 100,000. And we're now at 288. And that's a really good thing. It was 313 the last time. And if you start to follow the downward trend, it's certainly been a significant downward trend since the beginning of January. And so that's in Marion County and Clackamas County. We are meeting in both metrics, both advisory metrics for the elementary, which is less than 350 per 100,000. And we have every reason to believe that those numbers will keep dropping. The more people get vaccinated, the more people that continue to implement, you know, the expectations around face masks and everything else. We think all of that really helps. And, and all of that adds to getting our kids back in school as soon as possible. The timeline that we're shooting for is, is for K5 is March 1st. And that's a soft start so that we can bring in cohorts of kids to go over what routines look like in a hybrid model. It's really important that we do that since students have been away from school buildings for so long. And we need to make sure that our safety protocols are in place. And then we have a full start the week of March 8th. And that's in a full hybrid model. We will continue to offer CDL or comprehensive distance learning because we're able to do so with staffing. And because we also know that we have a sizable amount of our population that prefer to remain in comprehensive distance learning for, for things that they consider safety reasons. And we're able to do that in the elementary. In the middle school, it's similar, but the adjusted metric is less than 200 cases per 100,000. That's actually the same metric six through 12. In Marion County, we're still at 288 per 100,000. So again, we're getting close. Beginning of January, we are at 486. So a significant drop in cases the past number of weeks. And we expect for that downward trend to continue. And Clackamas County is, is already meeting. And so just so you know, we have two schools in Clackamas County, Scotts Mills and Butte Creek. And we need to be meeting in both counties to be able to be considered within the advisory metrics. And so for grade six through eight, we're looking at March 15th for a soft start with targeted groups. Then we have spring break and then a full start the week of March 29th. And that's in a full hybrid model. And we are able at the same time to offer comprehensive distance learning to those families who, who have requested that. And we have gathered the data already. And, and again, we have a sizable amount of families who, who are requesting that. And we think we're able to, to provide that service to our families as well. The, the high school is the same metric, less than 200 cases per 100,000. And I want to talk about that in the next slide as well because we are looking at an April 6th start date. That's the beginning of quarter four. And I want to get into the reasons why that looks different from the other grade levels. And so Silverton High School is a dilemma in and of itself because of the, even though we have advisory metrics, ODE has required us, any school who is outside of the advisory metrics, and we are at this point at 288 cases per 100,000, we have to offer both hybrid model and a comprehensive distance learning model simultaneously. And in terms of a master schedule for high school, and in high school, we base our master schedule on the credits that kids are forecasted for to keep them on track to graduate. We're not able to run two simultaneous models. We just don't have enough staffing to do that with the amount of courses that are being offered right now. And so, and, and because unlike elementary, the licensure piece for teachers in high school is subject and content specific. So it gets even more complicated to try to find enough math teachers per se that are licensed in math to teach both in a comprehensive distance learning model and an in-building hybrid model. In order to do that, we would have to have a significant and severe reduction in the class offerings, core class, elective classes in particular. And we, that would affect kids staying on track to graduate. And so because this quarter, the third and fourth quarter represent the last chance for seniors to take credits that they need to graduate. And our elective courses, you know, have to do, a lot of them with the choices kids want to make after high school. And so there's a lot of implications there for credits and, and transcripts and, and everything else. And so we're, our, our goal really is to make sure that we're graduating kids and to make sure we're, kids are on track to graduate. And that is a major factor in having to postpone the, the start date to April 26th, going back to the metrics, which is the fact that we're not meeting those, we have to offer both models simultaneously. So we're just not able to do that. And that's a huge reason for such a late start date. When kids do come back in quarter four, the week of April 26th, we will be able to offer hybrid only. And then the case-by-case basis of families that need to work out some additional services because of their extenuating circumstances, they'll be working with our counselors to be able to work out some kind of plan to do that. But we only have the resource to offer one model at a time. And once we're meeting the metrics, once we start quarter four, we will be offering a hybrid model only. And so I just want to make sure I'm clear on that because it is, it is the reason why right now we can't, we can't offer both. The priorities that we're working on right now, we have the data right now that tells us which families would request staying in comprehensive distance learning and which families are going to be sending their kids to us in a hybrid model. And right now, we're working on staffing because staffing is a major issue. Because depending on how many kids we have coming back in hybrid model, we'll need to staff those schools with a teacher. And we'll need to do the same thing to keep the teachers or to staff the teachers in the comprehensive distance learning model as well. And what that means is that it might be a change in a child's teacher on the distance learning side because we intend to have teachers who are teaching in the distance learning side right now transition to a hybrid model. Although we're also looking at staff who have extenuating circumstances or, or are health risk, things like that, to try to make this the best situation we can. But that is a possibility to the child's teacher can change as a result of this. And again, that goes back to having to offer both of these instructional models simultaneously because we're outside the metrics and because we have a considerable amount of families who still want the distance learning option. And we feel an obligation to meet their needs as well. And it is part of the guidance and recommendation we're getting from ODE as well. Right now, schools are reconvening the reopening committees. They're, they're going full bore on those and implementing their safety blueprints. There's a lot of different 164 items that go into a safety blueprint. And we need to make sure that we've implemented each one of those fully before we can reopen. Nurses are putting together trainings and will train each school site in, in COVID safety precautions. And schools are starting this week, holding weekly town hall meetings to go over the logistics of what it'll be like when kids do return. So that is safety protocols, expectations for a hybrid model, scheduling, buses, all kinds of logistical info. And those will go on each week for the foreseeable future. And then I will be walking through with, with my senior leadership team and with some of you as board members to do a final safety walkthrough on each school on the 22nd and 23rd of this month. And that will be a, a week or so before we start getting the ball rolling. But I wanted to spend a minute on going a little bit deeper on the implementation of what these safety protocols look like at the school site because I, I want to give you a taste of just how detailed these need to be. And our point person on our team is Leslie Roach. And I wanted her to have an opportunity to walk through this slide with you to sort of tell you about the things that we're working on right now, sort of the things we're grappling with as well. Leslie?
Good evening, everyone. So each school has an individual reopening team and every principal. Good evening, everyone. So each school has an individual reopening team, and every principal is leading that team. And here's an example of some of the many, many things they are considering. They have reviewed the latest updated cleaning protocols from our custodial maintenance team, which is from the CDC and from OSHA. They have to review those guidelines and then make decisions about are we going to have kids go to the library to check out books? Or is the are the books going to be pushed onto a cart into each classroom and then distribute it that way? Do we have time to clean the library in between cohorts visiting? Should we have balls and jump ropes and equipment like this at recess? Should each classroom have a recess bag? Should they share recess equipment? Who's going to clean the recess equipment between each recess? So even small things that we take advantage for often in our elementary schools like recess, we have to really think through each of those small decisions. Another example, when we review the Ready School Safe Learners Guidance, where will students eat lunch? How will lunches be served during the day? Because we're really trying to limit movement during the day. How will we teach our students to stay six feet apart when we're talking about five-year-olds? Teaching what six feet looks like and how you move through the hallway or into the building? That's going to take some forethought. How will we get students to different? Usually we walk down the hallway and go to different classrooms for P E or for music. How are we going to do that? Now, are we going to have teachers move into classrooms and the students stay where they're at? Are we gonna have class outside? So there's lots of instructional decisions that each school team is having to think through. And the last one is really think carefully about how our specialists are still going to see their students. So someone like a speech language pathologist sees, you know, maybe fifty students in a day. I was at multiple buildings. How is that going to happen during COVID? And what's that going to look like? And how are we going to build time in for that? So you can see many, many small details that each reopening team is considering. And then sharing back with their staff and taking feedback and then making more decisions. So those reopening teams really need to be applauded for all of their time and energy, and they're really putting a lot of thought into their plans.
Thanks, Leslie. With that said, I'm going to exit out of this presentation, and I can answer questions that you may have for me. Leslie is here as well, and so is Dan. So I can turn it over to you as a board if you have questions for me.
Thanks, Scott. Board, any any questions you want to ask? Yes, Shelley.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, Scott, is there any chance you could bring back up the slide that shows the the numbers going down? And where checks are for the K through five through mid, I think the middle school is what I wanted to see. Let me see here. I've got to clear all you guys off to see the whole thing. Okay, so six through eight metrics adjusted. So the Clackamas County Schools, we do have two of them in Clackamas County, and they're one eighty-five.
Yes.
So those students cannot, they can't go back to school because we also have to have Marion County as well? Or can we send these kids back to school?
Since we're one school district.
Before our our school.
Sure. Sorry, Shelley. I think there was a delay.
Oh, that's that's true. Yeah.
So so we need to be meeting in both counties to be able to reopen. Yes. And that that has been a real a real sticking point for us. And we're not the only district that's having to negotiate that also. So yes, we need Marion County to be within the advisory metrics as well.
Yeah, so that was my next question to you was, you know, are are other clearly other school districts are facing the same issues? You know, comparable to our district, I should say, five-day districts. Can you?
Yes, I would say that we're in front of the game. Most districts that we know of are starting with kindergarten and first grade first.
Okay.
And not before we start sometime in March, and then every two weeks they're adding on grade levels. And so we didn't think that that was good enough. So we were starting with K five.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Most most districts at this point have put off high school until April as well. And and larger districts are staying in C D L for the rest of the year. At least that's what we know so far. I talked to a few principals today in other districts, and that's where where they are. And for smaller districts, there's a lot more flexibility there. And so so it is important that we look at, you know, comparable school districts.
So this is for so what your what your the information you're receiving from O D E for having a hybrid and a C D L program? Is that a requirement that or is it advisory? Because there's a big difference between mandatory slash requirement.
Yes, and that that's.
So I just want to make sure it's clear that even though it's been said advisory, you know, may I I'm even sometimes frustrated. So can you explain that even?
I'm glad you brought that up. So so yes, they are advisory, but advisory metrics come with significant strings attached. And so right after that was announced by the governor, a week later, Oregon Department of Education came out with guidance and said, if you're outside of the advisory metrics, then you must provide these things. And one of them is you must run two instruct different instructional models simultaneously, which would be the in-person hybrid and comprehensive distance learning. And and that's a requirement. So even though the metrics say advisory, we still have things that were held to that are mandatory from the Oregon Department of Education. So it's so it's kind of the answer to that is I thought they were advisory. The answer is, well, yes and no.
If we get below the metrics in Marion County, clearly Clackamas has already done it for our two schools, but in Marion County, if we get below two hundred, say, I don't know, the end of February or maybe even a couple of weeks, maybe it's just great, you know. Can we start sooner than that? Can these can we? Are you ready to hit the ground running and start sooner than that, March fifteenth? Or is that the plan to make sure everybody's safe or whatnot?
Well, I I would say everything's worth considering, that's for sure. So if we need to, we can take a look at that with the facts that we have at the time and make best decision possible. So that that is possible. I think one of the other things is that we're held to really strict safety protocols and and so and part of that is been strongly recommended to school districts in Oregon to do a sort of a scaffolded rollout. So roll out one group first, which would be K five, then middle school, then high school. If the metrics somehow dramatically improve, then we will take a look at that. Also knowing that our high school is thirteen hundred students, Silverton High School is considerably larger than than, say, one of our K eights or in-town elementary schools. And so we just want to make sure that we're making the best decision with the facts that we have.
Yeah. Yeah. And I appreciate the the details of the little things from Leslie Roach. You know, yeah, oh, geez. Okay, I'm I'm done for the moment. Thank you, Scott, for for clarifying a lot of that. I appreciate it.
Very welcome, Shelley.
You're ready.
So I I want to pivot back to the high school for just a second because I'm also keeping in mind that we have quarters.
Yes.
Getting kids back into school in the middle of third quarter
Yes.
might introduce a whole additional set of complexities.
Yes.
So given that the the second quarter ends this Friday, and the third quarter then goes from Monday to, I think, April twenty-third, that's a constraint as well, as I'm.
Very much so, Janet. So the reason why I can't I can't pin down an exact decision on whether or not we can come back early. We just need to make the best decision with a myriad of facts that we have at that time. But really, I mean, and our goal in high school is to make sure that kids stay on track to graduate. And the master schedule has already been set with the amount of classes that we're offering. Some of the classes the kids took in the fall aren't going to be offered for other kids in the spring and 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 so we really need to pay attention to, you know, the courses that kids need in order to graduate if they're seniors, but also that we're not making a multi-year obstacle for kids that have to navigate that after we get back into regular school, if I could call it that. It's not to say that we wouldn't be hard pressed to try to find a way to bring kids back, but it wouldn't be at a detriment to kids staying on track to graduate.
Okay.
Other questions? Yeah, Tom, it looks like you might have one. Tom, you're muted.
Thanks, Jonathan. Yeah, Scott, what a what a chore to to sort all that out and the ever-changing rules. I just like Jan, I'm going to focus on the high school. Are we? Well, I guess the the school, all the all the schools, but are we testing? Are we doing state testing this year? I'm understanding that we're not. Is that is that true?
So we, the State of Oregon applied for a waiver. And right now, the the state testing that is mandatory is for English language learners. We call that the ELPA test. So that that will be done this year, but state testing will not be.
Okay. Yeah, I disagree with that decision. It's not yours.
Sure, of course.
I'm not I'm not getting on your case for it, but I I would like to just be able to know and measure what the effects of this was, just so we would know. Just so we would know what it is and be able to either, you know, measure the well, and some to measure the the effects, probably how much the negative effects were, but you know, probably that there's some surprises in there that that wouldn't, you know, maybe the kids grew in places that that we didn't. You know, so I just, e- even though the data might come out, you know, people will use it for for negative purposes, but you know what? It is what it is, and I would like to know what that is. So.
Well, I think you're right, Tom. I think I think there's so few assessments that we can look at. You know, when when we start to, when policymakers start to to take a look at the types of things that kids need, you know, having been out of school for a year or so.
Yeah, this is what happens when it, this is what happens when you do this for a whole year. But anyway. And second, like I'm seeing in the high school, I'm seeing, I know my son has chose to do this, and I'm hearing him some others. And and I'm sure you don't have this data at your fingertips and only if they can provide it. Are there, my son is is he's a junior. Yet because he's been so on track so far, he is for this next term to make because first term was such a bear and so difficult, he's only taken three credits next term. And that was an opportunity for some AP classes, college credit classes. And I'm hearing of other students doing this too. And I'm concerned about what that does to their transcript and their competitiveness when it comes to college. You know, because they got to compete with other states that maybe did something different. And I don't know if that's something you guys can measure if you've if it's a noticeable thing, maybe I'm just seeing it with a few kids and it's and it's not a trend. But if that's something, if that's something that can be provided in in the future, I would, I'm curious to see it.
Well, we'll definitely make a note of that, Tom, and and come back to you if that's what you'd like. Absolutely.
Okay. Perfect. Yeah, thank you. That's all my.
Point of clarification, I think I mentioned that Scott's Mills was in Clackamas. We have families that live in Clackamas and attend Scott's Mills. I just want to make sure that I I correct that.
And I suppose that another, yeah, Scott, to just to jump on that technicality, by that measure, the high school is also in Clackamas County. So you technically got three schools.
Right. Yes, yes, absolutely. Other questions?
Yeah, thanks, Tom. Any other board members with questions? I guess I've got one. You you talked about, did you say you finished collecting all the data for the for, well, for which grades? Have you finished collecting the data?
Leslie, can you speak to that real quick?
Ah, sure. We have done surveys of all of our families for K eight. And we have almost all of that data back. Of course, there's always some families that we struggled to get a hold of. And so we're waiting on a few, but we have most of that data.
Is that data you can share or you would like to share? You didn't mention what the data was yet.
It's the number of families that are choosing to keep their students in C D L instead of returning to hybrid.
We're and once we, now that we have the data, we need to crunch it, Jonathan. And and we could certainly come back and and share that. But we need to crunch it and then figure out, you know, where we need to make staffing shifts and how that's going to look.
Yes, Jen.
Shelley?
Yeah. Oh, okay. Hey, Scott, can you clarify where Fox Online falls in place here now that we're in February?
Yes. So 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 we, as as you know, we we came up with a hundred percent online option for families. Really wanted that this summer, so we went ahead and set that up. We set it up, we staffed it. And that commitment was for a year. And that they follow a completely different format than comprehensive distance learning. And so the class classes don't even align necessarily in sequence to what's going on in in comprehensive distance learning. So it is a completely separate program, if you will.
Okay, so that's the year. There's nothing that's changed or is going to be changed with that.
That's correct. It was a commitments for for a year and and the staff are remaining in that for for.
Okay, I just wanted to make make sure that we're up to date on the current information. So do we? So and so correct me if I'm wrong here. Make sure I have this right. So we have students in our district who have chosen to be online, Fox Online. And we've staffed that. Now we have we have students who are in C D L. All of our students are in C D L right now with the option to come into hybrid when the time comes. But what about those kids that don't want to go into hybrid? Do they just stay in C D L? Or are they going to go on Fox Online?
Well, that, you know.
There's three groups.
Yeah. The Fox Online is a separate thing.
Okay.
That we we just have to keep that separate because it doesn't line up with the other two.
Okay, so we're going to still keep that separate.
Yeah, but having said that, in Silver Falls, we work with our families. And if we had, if we had individual circumstances that made it so that families could not send their kids back to us for whatever reason, we would have to work with those on a case by case basis. So
Right.
Just because that's who we are and and we intend to to make sure that we serve our families to the best of our ability. But in terms of a system-wide response, we can only offer one.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the clarification. I do appreciate it.
Of course.
And I did a quick number crunch on the number of families requesting in K eight for C D L when we returned to in-person. It's approximately a hundred and ninety students, K through eight, who would like to remain in C D L.
That's a hundred and ninety out of what about three, just well, let's see, twenty-seven hundred?
That would be probably probably out of twenty-three hundred.
Twenty, okay, twenty-three hundred.
So it's still a sizable group. The 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 issue is that there's there's pockets in each school. And so how do we serve those kids in comprehensive distance learning? How do we staff it? And that's the challenge ahead of us now.
It's probably approximately seven to eight teachers to to teach the those a hundred and ninety kids.
Somebody have their hand up. Jennifer?
Sorry, Jennifer, go ahead.
So my question is about the reopening teams that that Leslie talked about. Are those the same teams that started in the summer?
Yes.
And so in the summer, we were just planning, and now we're trying to run a school system plus plan for this change at the same time.
That's right. That's right. That's correct.
I think that's a great point, Jennifer, because, you know, our nursing team just released training videos today that staff have to watch and then put a little kind of quiz and check-off sheet, open session with the nursing team, because you can watch a thirty-minute video and leave with thirty questions. And so also creating an opportunity to watch the video and then some open sessions with the nursing team and others to to be able to ask questions. So I think your point is well-taken that, you know, these reopening teams are our teachers and are classified people who are trying to work in CDL right now and then also plan for this reopening.
A heavy load.
Heavy load.
Sure.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to see if Dana is a part of our team as well, to see if Dana had anything she wanted to add.
I don't think so. I appreciate that Leslie put on there. I think in for special education, my biggest worry is how do we continue those obligated services to kids on IEPs in a hybrid model and a CDL model because of cohorting and some of the advisory metrics regarding safety. So you can only see so many kids in a day or a week. We have, you know, most of our specialists, our school psychologists, speech pathologists, behavior and autism specialists. They serve multiple kids in multiple buildings. So coming back into hybrid, we're we're already starting like, how is this going to work? How are we going to meet the, you know, kids' needs and families' needs? So it's just one more, one more thing to talk about and make plans for. So, yeah, it just makes it a little bit more difficult, but we will continue to work on it.
Thanks, Dana. Thanks, Jennifer.
Well, I think what we'll do then is we'll move on. Thanks, Scott, appreciate it. So next up, we have our student representatives. I don't see them promoted yet, so I'm not sure if they're going to be.
Yep, we are doing that right now. Give me one moment.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Madison and Evelyn, you should be able to unmute and talk.
Hello, everyone. I am Evelyn Morales Sierra, the Diversity Director and the School Board Representative.
And I am Maddie Manning, the Assistant Diversity Office Director and Assistant School Board Representative.
To start off, our FFA has many members who are currently signed up to compete in sectional events. They are also have many members who will be applying for their state degrees and are preparing for both of these events at their monthly chapter meetings.
Our marching band has recently been invited to represent Oregon in the 2021 Pearl Harbor Memorial Parade in Honolulu. This is a great honor for the marching band, who is currently working on looking into the prospect of the attendance of our band in the event.
Our band also had a total of seven band students be accepted into honor bands. Charles Petrick was accepted into both the All Northwestern Honor Band and the Western International Band Conference. Carter Dowd, Josh Severna, Avery Horner, Anna Muller, Cecilia Petrick, and Charles Petrick, including Melanie Tickner, they have all been accepted into into the Western International Band Conference as well.
Our Key Club and Interact Club are currently teaming up to put on a food drive that will be held the week of March thirteenth through the twentieth.
Our GSA Club is currently still meeting weekly and providing a safe space for students to socialize.
As for speech and debate, they have been practicing for the past four months twice a week and have been and have just begun to compete virtually. They've already brought back a fifth-place trophy in Student Congress. Congrats to Mike Huesman for her fifth-place finish.
Silverton Battle of the Books Club is still going strong. Having just finished their third novel, they are very excited to continue reading the books on the Obob List.
Our National Honor Society students are currently planning to create a virtual reading under the stars event for Mark Twain Elementary students. They are also doing a children's book drive to collect new or gently-used books to give to Mark Twain Elementary students upon their return to hybrid instruction. Drop-off spots for the books for the book drive are collected at Garrett, Robland, and Mark Twain Elementary.
Our Environmental Club is currently working on native plant propagation and looking to identify more community projects.
As for sports, our boys' basketball team is currently getting in workouts about three times a week and are very excited to have the season start in May.
Our football team is currently participating in practices Tuesdays and Thursdays. The JV and freshmen are practicing from three fifteen to four fifteen and varsity practices from four fifteen to five thirty.
Our girls' basketball team has been having Google meets as a group once a week and hoping to practice at the middle school tennis courts if slash when the weather permits.
Wrestling is currently meeting for one and a half hours every Monday and Wednesday to do a combination of outdoor workouts to prepare for the season.
ASB celebrated Counselor Appreciation Week last week and began recognizing Black History Month, which we will continue throughout the month of February. We have been holding virtual lunchtime game times on Friday with prizes for winners. We also plan on spotlighting multiple students via our class class Instagram pages this month.
That sums up all of our updates on our activities, clubs, and sports. Thank you for having us, and go Foxes.
Thanks, Evelyn. Thanks, Madison. We always appreciate the updates. Right. Next up, we have got our school reports. We have up first Mark Twain Elementary with Greg Cotts.
Right, I should be live now, so. Well, thanks for having me this evening. Yeah, definitely excited to share a little bit what's going on at Mark Twain Elementary School. I'd like to first start off by acknowledging that the successes of Mark Twain really are result of the joint effort between our and our, we are experiencing some great things. And it's a direct reflection of the people involved. So so that's really, that's really impressive, and I can't say enough about the staff, both working at home, working in a school building, as well as the families. It's, you know, it's, everybody kind of has to work as a team, and so it's pretty exciting to see that. Initially this year, the majority of our energy was directed towards identifying supporting students experiencing difficulty. Could be academically, could be socially, could be emotionally. And and what we've done is we're taking some of those students and we're serving them in our limited in-person instruction or the Lippi program. We're excited that that program is going to take a jump from fifty-three students that we're currently serving, jumping up to a hundred and nine students with the addition of our kindergarten grade level, which starts their first day is tomorrow. So we got, we got a couple of weeks of the kindergarten in Lippi before we get a chance to go into hybrid. I was actually pretty excited to share a little bit of thunder with with the student reports. They referenced our our literacy team at Mark Twain Elementary School is currently sponsoring a book drive, which will continue through February twelfth. And again, she had she had mentioned that we're collecting gently-used books, and we're going to use those at a later date, try to put those books in the hands of the students. So that's, that's really exciting. And then also the National Honor Society and Mark Twain, the co-hosting of, we have an annual event, a literacy promotion event called Reading Under the Stars. We we do that in kind of conjunction with Dr. Seuss's birthday. So March second is that event, and and it's, it's really great to partner with the high school, and we really appreciate the help of the high school students. It's virtual this year, which I think we're getting used to everything is virtual this year, but in in a typical year, it's, it's great to have the high school students involved with the younger students and families. And then, as crazy as this may sound, we are gearing up for two thousand twenty-one kindergarten registration. We're, you know, kind of across the board, I think in the district, we're down in terms of kindergarteners that are enrolled in school currently. Obviously, there's probably a number of factors there, but we're we're looking at hosting three kindergarten roundup events with the first one the week before we head out for spring break. So the week of March fifteenth, with with Mark Twain Elementary School and Robert Frost going to transitioning to two K five buildings next year, we're looking to host kindergarten registrations at both sites. So we'll, we'll start our first one the week of March fifteenth. This evening, I I planned a couple of student videos, and so I've got some tech be helped helped behind the scenes, but I wanted to prep the first one. We're going to transition to watch this. This is an interview, actually interviewed a handful of students, and this is the one that I was going to share at our report. But this student is a second grader. Her name is Vanessa Morales. She's one of our ELD students. She's an amazing kid and and she's pretty infectious with her personality, so you get a chance to see that a little bit, but we'll go ahead and go to that video, and then I have one more to share after that. Derek?
It has to be red.
There it goes. It's red. All right, Vanessa, so I have heard that you've been doing a lot of really, really good work. You have lots of people that are very proud of you. So can you tell me about some of those adults at home that are helping you and are very proud of you?
My mom. Of course.
Of course.
And and my sisters, my two sisters that live with me.
Oh, who helps you with your schoolwork at home? Oh, yeah? Do they ask you questions, or do you ask them questions? Okay, okay. So tell me a little bit about a regular school day now. School's very different. So can you tell me about a regular school day for you?
So I just wake up and when my clock rings, I just go into class.
So you have like timers set, or you know what time to start class?
I have set, like, I have, like, a clock. And if it's, I make sure to put the time on.
Nice, that's very helpful. So you know when to log into your meetings when you use the computer? Okay.
Well, it's actually a tablet.
Okay, nice.
Use computers.
Tell me about when you get a chance to come to school, because you've been coming into school for a couple of days. Can you tell me about those days?
That we just had to wear masks at us.
What else do you have to do?
Going to ELD.
Who do you get to see when you come into the ELD room?
Just some of my classmates and Ms. Powell.
Okay, what's what's class like when you come into ELD and you come in during those couple of days during the week? What's class like? Tell me a little bit about your day when you come into school.
Oh, in school? Well, it's actually pretty fun. But I had to ride the school bus here.
And the school bus comes and picks you up at your house?
Yeah, it just kind of a little bit comes late.
What about some of the things that you enjoy about school now? What's what's going well for you at school?
Um, that I can spend time on my house and I can be with my two sisters and my mom, but I have to be in my room.
Oh, okay.
I have my own desk in my room, but it's shaped my desk.
So when you're doing homework at home or practicing your assignments, or you're in your Google meets, you have a special place at home? Nice.
Mostly in my room.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, school, sometimes, since school's so different right now, it can be really, really challenging. Can you, can you tell me how you work through some of those days that are that are harder or really difficult?
Well, it's more harder than into other domains sometimes.
Okay.
You have to wake up and you have to go into other domain.
Yeah, what, when you're trying, when you're when you're trying to stay on schedule, or kind of like you were saying, you have to wake up, what, do you have some strategies, or do you have some some tricks that work for you to help you do through those hard days? Like what? Tell me one.
Like my teacher made this thing that would just go to see if I can go to the Google Meet. Like, we just tap it, and then we just tap the Google Meet, and then we just and then we just join with this, yes.
So on, so your teachers has arranged your iPad, all of the icons on your iPad, so they're easy for you to touch and complete assignments or go on your Google meets. Okay, I see, that's awesome. Well, what advice would you give a student that's having a really hard time? What would you tell a classmate that's having a hard time? How would you help them?
Does this, they like you to that your Google meets? And find the button. They have to go into the Google Meet.
They have to go into the Google Meet and find the button. What happens? What would you tell a classmate that's having trouble completing the assignments? Or when they need help? How do they get help?
You just a a person right next to you.
Say that again?
They just have a person right, right next to you.
Oh, okay, okay. How about with school being so much different right now? If you could change something or make a suggestion, what what would you say? What would you change?
That we can go to person every single day.
You would rather come into school every day, huh? What else? What what else would be different? What's what's different? What's happening that's different right now that you would like to change?
That we don't have to get on a Google Meet on the tablet and here.
You would, so you would rather see somebody in person and have to do it through your iPad? No, that's, I know, I know. Okay. Well, I appreciate you visiting with me, Vanessa, and I'm very proud of you. You've been doing a really good job coming into school. You've been very responsible wearing your mask, too. So I will let you go, and I look forward to seeing you soon, okay? All right, bye, Vanessa.
There we go, got to unmute. So that was, yeah, she's she's an amazing kiddo. She she works so hard in the classroom. You know, I wish I could kind of share what a what a day looks like with her, but that was, that was a great reflection of, you know, as one of our students, but then on top of it, a student that's trying to learn English as a second language. So she's, she's very impressive, very impressive student. And then the second one, it's a little bit shorter. It's about four and a half minutes. And this student is named, his his name is Kane Dolan. Kane is a second grader. And he actually is being recorded at the the front end of a social emotional learning intervention. And so he, you'll you'll see him kind of starting off his day in the, he he goes in to meet with the counselor, and you'll see him signing in, identifying, I think previously when I've had a school board report, I've talked a little bit about our zones of regulation. And so you'll see on the board that there are four colors. You'll see the furthest one on the left is blue, which is kind of sad or 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 depressed or maybe not not feeling well. And then you'll see green, which is kind of our sweet spot when we're, when we're happy and we're ready to learn. And then you'll see yellow, which is kind of an agitated state a little bit, and I think everybody goes through that, including adults. When things maybe aren't going our way, and we kind of ramp up our emotions a little bit. And then you'll see the, on the far right, the color is red, and that's kind of our, you're our angry color. We're kind of out of control. And so the students come in and they identify what zone they're in, and and he talks a little bit about why, which is pretty interesting. And then they go through some different, very specific interventions to kind of help them with strategies. Sometimes it's difficult for the young students to put to put, to really articulate in words what is happening, but they are learning skills, and as they get a little bit older, they can associate words with them and and use those strategies specifically to help them stay in the green or return to the green, and it helps them access their education. So we'll go to the last video, which is Kane Dolan, a second grader.
Welcome to the kit, Dan. We're so glad to have you.
I am too.
Let's sign in on the clock first, the thing. So all the kids sign in on the clock with the amount of time that they have, so they can kind of keep track and know how long the time is.
Yes.
How long is kit then?
An hour, which is sixty minutes.
Right, oh, you got it. So let's look at your schedule. What's first thing here?
Um, that is feelings.
Let's go check in with the feelings. He's going to pick the zones of feeling that he's in this morning, looking for his name. What zone are you in today?
I'm in the green because I am here.
And we are in the green because you are here too. Works both ways buddy. Alright, let's go over and do some deep belly breathing. You can have your choice if you want to do it with your palm and do a take five breathing or if you'd like to do the breathing ball. Which would you like?
On the breathing ball.
How does that feel?
It feels pretty good.
Yeah, why do we do breathing anyway, do you think? Why do we practice it so much?
I do not know. Because it makes you feel better.
Absolutely. Helps us, our brain calm down, doesn't it? If we're upset, which of course you're not right now. So come on around the corner to our school moves corner. And you have choices. You can do these exercises for the hands, like to prepare for writing. Or we can do some floor exercises here. Or we can do wall pushups with sight words. What do you want to do today?
Pushups with sight words.
Alright, and you pick any that you can read, alright?
First grade. Sight words. Has. Open. Let. Flame. Fly. Box. Them. Where.
This one, okay.
Way. Time. By. What, wood. Would. And. Mayor. May.
Good job on that. Thank you, Kane. So come on around and we will move your tickets on your schedule. Because you've already done the first three things. So move them over to the finish column. And that's how we check into the Kit Den. Can I ask you a quick question really fast? Why do you think you come to the Kit Den every week?
Um. To. Help you learn. And do a bunch of other things. Like math. You get to play board games. You can play catch. You can basically do anything in here, but not make ruckus.
That's true. Well, we do work on our social skills, don't we? Taking turns and being a good sport and things like that. And we love having you come Kane, so let's wave goodbye to everybody who's watching. Thank you for coming in to see our check in to the Kit Den at Mark Twain Elementary. Bye bye.
No, no ruckus making at Mark Twain. It's a, it's a pretty strict place, so. But um, I I think just kind of in closing, just a little, little summary is that. How important it is to really try to teach the whole child. So academics is one very important piece. But the uh, the emotional, kind of the internal, um, you know, understanding of one's uh emotions. And and energy level and all of those things, anxiety. Um, you know, it's important to provide students with strategies to number one, identify them and be able to. Articulate how I'm feeling, but then also those strategies to help them move and transition when they do get elevated. Or they bump out of the green zone, we call it. So um, some students working on some great skills. Things, things are going well. We're working really hard to get some kids back in the building and uh, just, you know, appreciate all of your support, you know, as a school board. Um, and as well as our community in Silverton. So thank you very much.
Thank you Greg, really appreciate it. Okay, we also have a report from Sequoia Falls Academy. So Jennifer Hammond. You're muted Jennifer.
There we go, there we go. Hello, thanks for having us tonight. I don't know how we feel about following the Kit Den, but. It is what it is. So let me see if I can screen share here for you guys. Um, Derek, I'm not seeing the option to screen share. How does? There's no.
Be a button tool.
There it is, okay. Here we go. Can you see me now?
Yep, you're good Jen.
Excellent. Okay, well. Is it, is it showing in the, there we go. Okay, I can see you now guys. Okay, so thanks for having us here. I feel um like this report is in some ways a culmination of conversations we've been having together for five to six years. And and really directly reflects some of the work that that you of a board, as a board have helped drive in our district. So we hope that you find it as exciting as we do. We've been looking at data together for many years and several years ago, you asked us to get very specific about who that eight percent. Is that Silver Falls School District is is not working for. And that eight percent measured by the uh percentage of kids who were not successfully completing in our school system. If I remember right, I think it was Tom who said, um, you know, I want to see kid by kid, go back five years. Any kid who didn't successfully complete, we want to know why. Remember that conversation? So that work allowed us um, to- told us that it was, it's not just one thing that that derails our students. If you think of completing our school system, like climbing this flight of stairs. And risk factors that students come with, like luggage that they have to carry up those stairs. What we continue to see in the data is that there comes a point where there's just too many bags. Students can carry a bag or two or three, sometimes even four. And Silver Falls School District, I think is masterful at using some tier two and tier three interventions and supports. Things like academic supports, alternative education supports, counseling office supports, a data teams, resource rooms, advisory groups. All to help students get up those stairs. But when we start getting into five, six, seven risk factors, our stairs, our school system is just not built for that. So these are the students that need different stairs and these are the students that this program is built for. Right now, in addition to those students, we are serving an expanded group of students that are not Sequoia Falls. Students, but they are high school students that are in need of credit recovery or GED options, we believe specific to the closure. Um, and then also mental health interventions, risk assessments and mental health supports for the entire district. That we believe are specific to the closure. Um, that's why on one of the attached board book documents where you can see services provided kind of month by month. We've broken that down between services provided for Sequoia students and for, for other district students. So you can see, you know, can where our time is being spent, where those services are going. I think that we will continue to provide supports to those other groups, but I think that that need is really exaggerated now because of the closure. But it might be a need that doesn't go away, you know, right away when we reopen. We may be working to fill that void for another year or two um after we reopen. And and we would like to to be there to help serve that as as long as we are able to. So with this understanding that it's a complex set of issues, it allowed us to pose the question. If we were really going to make our school system work for all kids, what would that look like? Um, and we were prepared through the last few years, we've started to put some plans together. And and really think about what those services would need to look like for all students to be successful. Then twenty twenty happened. Um, and you know, when COVID hit and we had to go into a closure, some of those needs that we were looking at. Um, you know, extended beyond a group of kids that we were previously concerned about. And the needs were exaggerated. On the upside, we have some funding specific to Student Success Act. That's, that's funding that's focused on high school completion and student investment account dollars, which is focused on equity. And equity is, is really about looking at who the system is not working for and how to fill those gaps. And then, of course, with COVID magnifying issues around both success and equity, it's go time for Sequoia Falls. So here's what we, and and when I say we, please do look at the board book attachments at our team. I believe that these are truly the right people doing the right work. They bring a remarkable combination of skills and experiences and perspectives to this work every day. Um, education obviously is is the core of our program, like we are an educational institution. Uh, there's nothing really out of the box innovative or risky that we're doing with education. Most districts have some kind of standalone alternative education program. There are best practices for alternative education that we know work. In a standalone program, you can build an environment specifically for the risk factors. Instead of trying to overlay strategies into a mainstream classroom to accommodate for risk factors. We can build these stairs with the appropriate handrails, pulleys, buckets, etc. So for our educational component, we have an alternative learning environment. We have credit, uh flexible credit options and a couple of different GED options. Where we've tried to be more innovative and take some more risks are in the other two components of our program. The thinking here is that building the right stairs for these kids can potentially get them a diploma. But it won't support them back into a mainstream classroom and it won't give them a future. So towards this end, we require our students to be actively working to unpack that luggage. So. If students are struggling with housing instability, food scarcity, access to healthcare, transportation, etc. It's creating a barrier for them at school and it's going to create a barrier for them after. We believe our time is best spent not helping them carry the bags, but helping them get rid of the bags. Let's unpack them and get rid of them. So our social worker is key to this work, but our entire staff have a roles in this work. This is truly about community service integrations work. We utilize our community partners, grant opportunities and several different funding sources. This is really a berated funding opportunity, working with our community in this way. The third component of our program is um around healthcare. We we partner with our healthcare systems and work to unpack those mental health bags. Most of our students participate in onsite outpatient treatment, working through those bags of trauma, depression, anxiety. ADHD, healthy relationships, substance abuse. This costs us nothing but office space and partnership coordination. Now, because we're utilizing um the SIA funding, we did get a portion of that funding. Not the entire package that we agreed on last year, but a portion of it. We did want to roll out as many of those activities that we identified as need areas as we could. And certainly as we work towards equity in our school system, some of these activities are a natural fit here at Sequoia. So the first of those is our district social worker. That falls under the additional mental health supports for K eight schools. I encourage you to look at the flyer that is up on board book for those services. Brian does serve the entire district. He is feeling that right now. Um, but what a blessing in this time to have that added service. Where, where we're in a time where so many students and families who've never had to ask a question before, our access services now do. But we now have the support to help bridge that for them. Additionally, we have our bilingual support. As we wrote it in the spring in our SIA plan, it was a drop in support service for any of our families experiencing a language barrier in our school system. It exists right now in the form of a Spanish helpline. It is available to the entire district. And when we are open, we will be ready to welcome families in with a bilingual staff and onsite resources and services. The third thing that we brought in under it, um, the Sequoia Falls is the Student Health Navigation. Exploration process. This is on the list. We're doing the legwork to bring forward a proposal down the road. Right now, we do feel like we are able to meet the healthcare access needs with the help of our social worker and the health navigators at Legacy Health. Um, I would love for you to hear from a couple of our students tonight. We have students in some different classrooms. So I think um Derek, if you could. Send the live square over to room three where Dyson and Mr. Benavides are.
Alrighty, I think we're going to need you to stop sharing your screen for that Jen.
There you go. And then I will get our next student set up in room five while you're on that.
And then Juan, I think you're ready. Great.
Hello, everybody. Uh, so here is Dyson. There you go. There you go, Dyson. Um, alright. So high school wasn't really working for me. I was a really bad student and I I found it really hard.
It's really quiet. Come a little closer Dyson.
Okay. Yeah, um, I wasn't able, I wasn't focusing. I was, I was a really bad student and I wasn't like concerned for my future. And I ended up getting on probation and like just doing the whole juvenile detention thing and and really kind of messing up my high school years up. And uh, my parents, they weren't really supporting me nearly as much as I hoped they would, but uh, and like I spent. Benavides was administrative staff at a high school and I spent like almost all my time in his office, like he he knew me very well. And uh, once then, once I got on probation and my parents were supporting me, I went to a recovery facility in Portland. And things were doing good, but once I got back, I was, I really had no direction. There was, there was nothing that was going to get me anywhere in life. I just knew that I'd messed up my high school up. So I was, I was, I was trying to graduate and so I started taking some online classes through Sequoia. And and things were, they were helping me and my things with my parents were getting worse. And I ended up being homeless, being kicked out by my parents and then living with some friends in an apartment. So I, as you can assume, I wasn't really doing my online schoolwork, but then uh, Benavides and the whole team at Sequoia were like. Um, really, they were definitely, they were helping me out. They were emailing me all the time, even if I wasn't emailing back. And and then I got a knock at the door at the apartment I was staying at and it was Benavides and the school resource officer. And they gave me a ride to Sequoia and I was able to get some work done then. And I really seen the motivation that they had to make me succeed was really, uh, it was awesome. And I was, I was like, why, why am I letting these people work harder than me, right? And so I just, I started making things better and uh. I recently got my GED like a week and a half ago and it was really easy. They took everyone away, everything hard. I didn't have to pay for any tests. I I really didn't know what it was going to be like getting a DED, but they made it super easy. It was awesome. And they always got food in there and it's, it's a good place you can always go to like from. Uh, I think they, they end up for it. It's, it's awesome. It's great. It helped me a lot.
Um, just a quick question. Dyson, where do you think you would be? Um, if you didn't come to Sequoia Falls?
Uh, honestly, I'd still be homeless. I wouldn't, I wouldn't come back from the apartment. Because I think one of the reasons my parents decided to let me back in is because I was actually being motivated to get myself better. I think you guys are awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you Dyson. Well, that was Dyson. Um, I'm going to shoot it on over back to Jen in the other room. Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, we've got Lili ready for you here. Hi, I'm Lily. I am seventeen years old and I am on my own. I am not able to live with either of my parents. I have missed time at Silverton High School for various reasons, including death of a family member and becoming homeless shortly after. I was expelled for my first semester of a high school and was adjudicated. I was pretty far behind and thought there was no way I was going to graduate until I. Until I started at Sequoia. Annie, my case manager, and I sat down and realized that it was not far off. For not, sorry. was not far out of reach. Some things that make this program work for me is that it is online, so I can set my own hours. At the high school, if I had to miss a week because I had to work or move or something, it would be almost impossible to catch up. Here, I can pick up where I left off when I was able to attend Silverton High School, going to school eight hours a day and working in six different classes while trying to manage my home problems. Made it impossible to focus. I knew I wasn't understanding what was going on in class, which made me feel far behind. And made me feel unmotivated to try to do my work or even show up. At Sequoia, instead of working in six different classes, I am finishing one and moving on to the next. In school, it was one teacher to twenty students or more, but in this program, it's much smaller and tailored to what I need. I think this program is great because I can reread everything a thousand times, unlike in a classroom when a teacher is explaining something, some students might feel uncomfortable or something is going on that causes them not to focus and they are missing information that they need for that class. I think because of this program and the staff in it, I am way more motivated to finish school. I come to Sequoia and in addition to working on my classes, I get help figuring out clothing, food, housing, hygiene products and a plan for my education and beyond. I really can get support with anything at Sequoia.
All right, Lily, can you tell them more about where you think you might be without Sequoia? Would you be at Silverton High School, Salem? Where would you be?
I think without this program, I wouldn't be continuing my education and just working, unfortunately.
Excellent. What do you think about this program? Do you think I should continue? What, what are your thoughts?
I definitely think this program should continue. It has extremely helped me out a lot and because of it, I will graduate and yeah.
Thank you, Lily. Okay, moving back on over to our corner so we can distance. Okay, we go home almost every day as a staff in this new program with questions to research the next day and things to explore further. So I can imagine that you guys might have many questions or things that you would like explained in a little bit more detail. I think that Superintendent Drew was going to allow for you to send questions or things you'd like more information about to, to him. Is that right, Scott? And then we might have an opportunity.
Or if the board would like, you can send it directly to Jen Han and that's fine too.
Oh, sure. I'd be happy to feel that. And then maybe we can give you a little bit more information about specific things that you're interested in at a later time.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
That was really powerful. Really appreciate that.
Yep, have a good night.
Okay. We are going to transition next to item number eight, which is our SFDA presentation. And hopefully Michelle will be online momentarily.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. I, I don't have a ton to talk about tonight. I just wanted to give a couple of updates. First of all, I just really wanted to thank you guys for the conversation and questions that you were having and asking earlier about the process of reopening school buildings. As, as Jennifer Trager pointed out, thank you Jennifer Trager for pointing this out. Our reopening teams are made up of, of staff members who are doing that voluntarily on top of all of our regular duties. And, and, and it's a lot. It's, it's quite a thorough process and there are a lot of details to, to go through and to figure out how best to bring our staff and students back into the school building safely. So I just wanted to thank you guys for your thoughtful conversation surrounding that. It's, yeah, it's, it's been quite a complex process to be a part of, but also just really, really rewarding to be. I'm, I'm a part of my own school's team and, and all of the teachers that I've talked to from different buildings are appreciating having a voice in that process and, and also are very clear on all the complexities that go into it. So thank you for that. So our, our biggest update is just, you know, that our SFDA executive board is continuing to, to work with the district leadership team to negotiate an MOU for our reopening process. So as you guys all know, anytime working conditions change, the union has, has the right to, to bargain those working conditions. And this, this process has actually been, enjoyable is maybe not the right word, but you know, every time we are able to come together and have conversations with Scott and Dan and Leslie, I just feel like it's, it's very collaborative. We're able to speak openly and honestly with each other. It goes both ways. We're able to voice our concerns. They're able to voice theirs. It's respectful. And, and I feel like it's been very productive so far. And, and I think we, you know, we've definitely identified a few issues that we're still a little, a little bit further apart on, but each time we, we talk and each time we come together, we get a little bit closer on those. So we spent two hours today bargaining and we'll spend another two hours tomorrow bargaining, bargaining as well and as many hours as it takes in the next couple of weeks to, to come to agreement on things. So as always, Scott and Dan and Leslie, I just always want to give you guys shout outs for, for continuing that collaboration and just that spirit of mutual respect and, and we appreciate you guys. So that is, that's really all I had to share tonight. But yeah, thank you all for your work and thanks again for having me.
Thank you. It's Michelle.
Hey Jonathan, can I ask a, a quick question that just popped in my head for Michelle and Scott?
For Michelle and Scott? I'm sorry.
Yeah, they'll probably both answer, but is there an update on the vaccinations for teachers for our district? And what that availability is just, I kind of want, it's a hot topic. And I, Michelle, when you came on, that kind of popped in my head and I remembered that I wanted to ask that. Can you give us an update on the status of our teachers or, you know, the, the availability for them? If they choose to have a vaccine and such, can you guys speak to that?
Yeah, so our district actually paired up with Silverton Hospital and there was a clinic the week of January twenty fifth that had vaccines available for any staff. It wasn't just for teachers, but for any staff in the district who were interested in, in getting them. So I know a lot of our, a lot of our teachers in particular have taken advantage of that. A lot had gone to the state fairground the week before that to, to get the vaccine when it was available there. So I would say, from what I've heard, I mean, I, I don't have any numbers or anything.
No.
But I, I think that everybody who, who is interested in, in getting the vaccine has so far had the opportunity to at least get their first round. So yeah, so for me, I, I got my first round on that Monday, the twenty fifth. So my second dose will be between February eighteenth and twenty second. So that's kind of the process. And then it takes another two weeks to get to full efficacy. So that's, that's what I know.
I'll just say, Shelley, that our, our focus has always been on providing access.
Yeah.
Staff and, and the, the feedback that we've gotten back is, is that staff are really taking advantage of that. And hats off to Silverton Hospital and San Am Hospital. They've just been so gracious with us and making it a really positive experience for teachers as well.
Great. Thanks. Thanks you guys for the update.
Do you want to say anything?
Yeah, I just, I just want to say that our, our, our district, our teachers have been really, well, the whole area has been really fortunate to have really three options. They had the fairgrounds option, San Am Hospital, the local hospital and a really collaborative process with, with teachers. Because sometimes we don't get the information directly from those sources. And so Michelle and the executive board was sharing information related to the state fairgrounds and we just have been trying to push out that information to our teachers. So I know other districts, especially in the Washington County area, teachers still don't have a date for their first. And I think all of our teachers have, all have had, had three different opportunities for the first round and are like Michelle was talking about coming up on that second round here, here in a week or two. So we were really fortunate.
Great, thanks guys.
Great. Thank you so much. Talking about that and giving us an update on the smoothness of it and the access and such like that. So good thumbs up. Great.
Alright. Well, thanks, Michelle. So next up we have OSEA, our other Michelle, who's going to be sharing some thoughts. And of course later in our, in our meeting, we're gonna be talking about a resolution recognizing classified staff. Thank you. That's Michelle.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay? It was cutting out for a minute, so. Um, yeah, I don't really have too much on updates either, which is more or less a good thing. We're all just going in the flow and let's keep going. But on the note of classified appreciation, thank you guys for the kind words earlier and the, you know, Scott and Dan when you came out and talked with a lot of different folks, I know they liked that earlier this month or last month. It probably was, so. Thank you, guys. At our last chapter meeting, I personally read off forty nine anonymous nominations for our selections for Classified Employee of the Year. So there were forty five, forty nine nomination forms reflecting twenty three or twenty six staff members, classified staff that were all, you know, stellar, but like one of them that was unanimous for the vote of who got it. But yeah, I read them out for about an hour and we narrowed each category down to the final selection and we're really proud of that. So yeah, we're all looking forward to the surprise winner day. And there was nominations for all the different departments of our classified, which really, you know, reflects a lot on anywhere you are in our district. It's amazing people. So yeah, I'm really excited for that. We have so many great people, especially this year, that have stepped above and beyond anything we've had to do. They've worked all hours and times, jump in to fill new tasks, tasks we never even would fathom that we would be doing this sort of thing, but we are. There's been porch visits, yard visits, deliveries. Our secretaries and EAs have been communicating with families since the get go. You know, there was a lot of stigmatic, I guess, in the beginning where communication was not all there, but persistence in our district, I think we've upped a lot of that. So shout out to our EAs and secretaries there. As the teachers navigated new teaching methods, the assistants also have implemented new ways to support the teachers and the kids and the families. So many of the nominations reflected how especially the EAs and SNAs have been here every day, all year, in person, virtual, whatever. They've been creative, versatile, demonstrating adaptability. They're thinking outside the box. We're all doing all we can to get through this. And like I said, there's no new updates, so we've kind of maybe got to a point where things are rolling along, which is good. These are all qualities, like the versatility and creativity that we're all hired for when we first go through that hiring process. You know, you can say it, you can demonstrate it, but we've all shown it this year, every level of our, you know, district. So y'all should be pretty proud of that because I am. Like Dan said earlier, our kitchen staff have stepped up and excelled. They've completely changed their whole game plan of serving hot fresh meals in the morning and in the afternoon. To now it's, here's hot foods that you take home cold and it's kind of distant feeding, like we're doing distant learning. So it's, things are flip flopped, but we're all still doing our part. Yeah, they've been knocking it out of the park every day. Some of our kitchen staff, I've noticed, you know, at my school personally and going around, they remember the family as they drive up in their van and, oh, hey, hey Scott, how you doing? Oh, how's Johnny doing? You know, you guys want the sun butter today or chicken nuggets? And they pretty much know what that family is geared for and have a little conversation. It's, you know, those little things that keep us and our families going. Yeah, they're just, they're another awesome team that have just keep going with their smiles and things, things on them and they keep showing up every day. There's different ODA and the food guidelines that come down and they just adapt to it. And you know, every day, here we go. Another shout out for our secretaries. They've been exemplary. They've been working nonstop, around the clock, keeping the schools, the principals, the teachers, all of our schedules, students, we're all organized and have somewhere to go with answers. And I just, I know we couldn't have done this year without them. A lot of times secretaries are that middle kind of man in front of the door and you see them and then go somewhere else. But they've really been our number one spot this year. Also, another shout out to the custodial maintenance grounds team. They've endlessly been on the front ground. They've measured recently, they've measured square footage of the classrooms and cubic footage. So we know how much like airspace they have and how to, how, what's it gonna take to keep the air ventilated, keep our fresh air in here for people coming in. That takes a lot and that's every single room, every single building, the whole district. You know, we know we're gonna be safe. Yep. Also, you know, the custodians have kicked up disinfecting. We've gotten new products and even, you know, regular cleaning products. And here's where kids are gonna eat. Now there's sanitizing food service, surface areas. So, you know, shout out to kind of our custodial maintenance admin there to keep us going with the nurses and what we need to do to be safe and sanitary. You may have noticed a couple of spots, there's air purifiers in some of the rooms where maybe the air quality isn't able to get the fresh air coming in without a major reconstruction. But we have these awesome fancy air purifiers that basically can clean the whole air of a room in like seven minutes. And it's impressive. There's some other units that are gonna be coming around. There's some with classrooms that have like medically fragile children or at-risk individuals in there. And so it's really nice to see, you know, that our safety is number one at hand as well as the students. So thank you guys for that. Yeah, our HVAC and maintenance team have just, they've been here every day, all year, demonstrating versatility. There's been quite a bit of challenges thrown at them and they just, you know, persist through it. Oh, that was a side note. Back to our secretaries. I know they spend a lot of hours making phone calls with students, parents, answering phone calls. Sometimes they're pleasant, sometimes they're a little heated, but our Silver Falls employees handle it with grace, with respect, honor. You know, parents aren't afraid to call in whether they're calling in for whatever reason. So yeah, my kudos to them. You know, we all wouldn't be here on this meeting tonight if it weren't for the tech department. Huge shout out there. They've kept us moving, functioning all year. They put in countless hours, day and night, supporting us, fixing our last minute problems. It's all ultimately for the benefit of our students. We're all here for the success of the students in Silver Falls. And, you know, they deserve every thank you, every kudos, every, anything we can give them. They're really here at our core, so. Yeah, big thank you to them. Yeah, I'm really liking this classified appreciation. Yeah, big thank you to them. Um, yeah, I'm really liking this classified appreciation. I don't really know all the scope that the tech department has had to handle as far as getting our new programs going, the different obviously canvas and edge nudity problems we've had and they just keep us flowing. And here's what we're going to do today. And, you know, I'm not a techie. I can't get into it, but many, many thanks to all of you. Yeah. So we're looking forward to moving along and getting reopened. And anything we can do to help, we're here. Um, we have so much gratitude for all the classified staff and let's just see what 2021 brings and keep us number one.
Thanks, Michelle. We really appreciate you.
If you guys have any questions or comments too, I'm open.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you for the updates.
We are now getting ready for our first public comment. So as a reminder to everybody, please email Debbie Balloff, which is balloff underscore Debbie at silverfalls.k12.org.us. If you'd like to request a slot to speak while we are waiting for people to possibly queue up, I will read the statement that we read every time regarding our expectations. So we are glad you're here and welcome you to address the board at this time with your ideas, opinions, questions, concerns, compliments. Please be certain to sign in before you present. Of course, again, you're online. Remember that we are, we all modeled the way for our students and we ask that you share your thoughts in a respectful way. The board's role during public comment is to listen. Rarely will you get an immediate response to information. If there is follow-up necessary, we will direct our superintendent to do that. In order to ensure equity amongst speakers, the board will limit remarks to three minutes per individual. If a group of three or more wishes to appoint a representative to speak on its behalf, the board will extend the time for remarks to five minutes. A second public comment will occur later in the agenda specific to discussion and action items in the meeting. So Debbie or Derek or whoever is, I guess, keeping track. Do we have anybody lined up to speak tonight?
We do, Jonathan. We have Jacob Klotfilter first, so I'll be promoting him to panelist now.
Thank you.
And I'll just chime in to say that I will give a verbal reminder at 30 seconds and then again, when time's up.
Are we ready?
Yep. Thanks. You're up.
My name is Jacob Klotfilter. I live in Pioneer Village area. I have a 10-year-old son who is a fifth grader at Robert Frost. So good evening, members of the board, district staff, members of public who are listening. When I first asked to be included on the agenda tonight, I intended to only discuss the district's reopening plan as it relates to high school students. My opinion and the opinion of most every parent I've spoken to is that the plan that's out there is unacceptable. High school students being out of the building for 13 months at a minimum is, I mean, I just, it's unspeakable. And, and I asked to be included on the agenda tonight. I really didn't think that things could get any worse in the Silver Falls School District. I was wrong. Things got exponentially worse last Tuesday night when I got an email from Parent Square sending out a link to a youth truth survey. Uh, the survey included several questions about my child's experience at school. How do they feel in their classroom? Are they being bullied in school? These are odd questions considering that my child hasn't set foot in a building in 11 months. Strange. But things got really strange when the survey questions inquired about my child's treatment at school based on his sexual orientation. My son is 10 years old. He's a fifth grader. So he's at Robert Frost. He's one of the older kids at Robert Frost. So I'm assuming that if I got this survey, every parent at Robert Frost got the same survey. Are we really asking parents of third graders, eight-year-olds about the sexual orientation of their child? World is this appropriate? I, I cannot imagine what the thought process was that led to this survey going out. Quite frankly, I, I'm appalled. I've spoken to other parents who have seen the survey and we just, we can't believe what we're seeing. We are in the midst of the greatest public education crisis that anybody hearing my voice right now will ever see. No, I, I just, I can't imagine a scenario where anybody, any of us see a crisis greater than this COVID issue that we're facing right now. And this crisis may not be your fault, but it's your problem to deal with.
30 seconds?
And your response to this crisis will define your careers as public officials, elected and paid staff. Is quizzing parent on the sexual orientation of their children really the best use of staff time and district resources? How is that relevant to this crisis in any way? Sending out this survey was a terrible decision. It would be bad to ask those questions at any point, but it's completely inappropriate and completely mind boggling for those questions to be asked of parents in the midst of this crisis when people should be focused solely on getting kids back in school. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Okay, so our next public comment is from Ray Kaser. I will promote Ray now. So Dr. K, you should be able to unmute and use your video.
Okay, here we are. Thank you. I appreciate your openness and attempts to, uh, communicate much better in the last year or so. I think that's very important and I appreciate all the work that you're, that you're doing in that regard. Uh, I watched the, um, the work session a couple of weeks ago and appreciated the discussion in the comments and quite a bit of effort going into developing a, a template for your agenda. And I noted that several of you indicated that this is a work in progress. And I agree with that wholeheartedly. A, a gentle nudge to the ribs, however, in that the agenda for that work session did not include taking action on the agenda template. And, and as a result of that, potentially there was no opportunity for public input. So one comment that I would make is I really think it's poor practice to take action at board work sessions. I know there are special cases where that, that needs to occur, but generally I think that's poor practice because you're missing out the part of public input. And so since I was not able to provide any input at that meeting, I'm going to do just a little bit here tonight. And, and so the one thing that I'm, I could go either way, I guess, but I know several years ago, the, the agenda item included, correspondence with the board. And I think that's not been on the agenda for some time. But I, I think that's an important part of communication with the public. If the board should receive an email or a letter, uh, that is public information. And of course you can develop rules for what's allowable. If somebody doesn't sign it, then you could disregard it, I would believe. But anyway, if you receive those kinds of communications, I'm not suggesting that you devote a whole bunch of board
seconds.
Reading them. But I think it should be noted that you did receive them and that they are on record in Board Book or someplace that is accessible to the public so that public can also see what else you might be, um, whatever the word is bombarded with. And so I, I really think that's an important part to consider to place that on the agenda. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Appreciate it.
Jonathan, as of this time, we haven't received any others that I'm aware of, but we can just get Debbie to confirm.
That is correct.
Okay. Given that, yeah, we're going to move into our administrator and staff reports. And first up, we have a Bureau of, uh, the Office of Labor. I can't even really know what it is. Bulleye case that Dan's going to speak to us about.
Yeah, thank you, Jonathan. And I won't try to re, uh, reread the letter that is posted on Board Book or the email I sent you, giving you a little bit of background information of our use of Edge of Staff as our substitute provider. Really just wanted to try to get as much advance notice to you as, as we could related to what decisions you might be making or we might be coming back to you as a board. And that is, uh, that we have filed a contested case with Bulleye with many other school districts across the state. We're a part of 10 districts in the WSD. In our particular aspect of this case, related to what Bulleye decided in a, in a case against Edge of Staff. And they, they, as my letter states, they noted our district and several other districts as joint employers. And so we, we want to contest that decision. That ruling by the investigator on that, because that plays a significant impact in, um, in our, how we use an entity like Edge of Staff. And so we're still very early in the deciding stages of, of how we're going to proceed with that. And my letter talked a little bit about possibly Edge of Staff's legal team taking on challenging this case. That's one, that's one approach that we might take. Edge of Staff definitely has a vested interest in not having us a joint employer. Because i- if we are a joint employer, possibly the need for having an edge of staff goes away because we, we, we own parts of that responsibility of hiring substitutes. And so there obviously Edge of Staff is, is a player in this wanting to, uh, have that part of that investigative ruling overturned. And what I'll come back to you with, uh, either at the work session or the next board meeting is an update on that. And, uh, one thing that I found out along with several of the other districts is that we are a part of, uh, an OSBA Legal Assistance Trust. And, uh, it's something that we belong to with OSBA. And we would need the board if, if we opted to have an attorney represent us and the other school districts, uh, in this matter. We would, uh, need the board to, to either pass a resolution or make an action to request to OSBA a, uh, access to this legal assistance trust to pay for the attorney fees to, to try to overturn this ruling. So I would look to have an update for you here. Like I said, at the board work session or the next board meeting.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the update. Anybody have any questions for Dan on that? Shelly, go ahead.
Hey, Dan, um, quick question for you. Um, it just popped in my head from your statement now. Um, the, has, have we always had Ed, Edge of Staff for, um, substitute teachers?
Not always. It's been here since I've been here, which is only a year and a half. But I know it's, uh, Edge of Staff's been around for a few years prior to that. Pretty much the primary provider of this region in terms of substitute systems for licensed and classified employees through the valley. I see Steve's on there. He might have a date that we, we started using Edge of Staff.
Yeah. So I believe this is our third year with Edge of Staff.
So what was the reason we went to Edge of Staff? I mean, clearly we've had substitutes in the district for many years.
There's a lot of reasons for districts to use this.
Made to go to Edge of Staff from what time practice before?
I can't speak to maybe it's precisely as to why, but it's pretty common knowledge or pretty common practice for districts to use a third party. You know, it, it saves on payroll from having to do, uh, taxes for subs and, and try to also have the human resource side oversee substitutes that, uh, maybe not their employees. So Edge of Staff takes all of those. So Ed substitutes become the, the employee of Edge of Staff. So Edge of Staff hires the subs and then, uh, and so they are responsible for all of the, the HR and the payroll and wages. And all of those responsibilities are, are done through Edge of Staff. And I think most subs prefer that because then they have 1.1 employer versus having a lot of different employers by district to district. So I think most substitutes prefer being part of a, an organization or entity like an Edge of Staff as opposed to having so many districts to try to work for per se.
Yeah. And so does Edge of Staff provide their own insurance for, um, for them as well? We don't provide that.
Correct.
Did we provide that before, like insurance and all that? But now we don't. So it's, it's all very separate.
Well, I don't think we probably provided insurance for our substitutes because they didn't work enough hours or, uh, were permanent employee. They weren't part of a bargaining unit. So I doubt that we paid insurance on them previously. And I don't, I, I don't know whether they are provided insurance through Edge of Staff or not.
Okay. Interesting. Okay. Thank you for the certification.
Okay. If there's no other questions, I think we'll move into our financial report.
Thank you, Jonathan. Good evening, everyone. There are two attachments tonight. First is the board financial reports through the month of January. There's, there's nothing new trend wise to report there. I have two other focus points tonight. The first one has to do with enrollment. And there is a enrollment report through January 31st attached. This has become a, a monthly necessity this year as we've, uh, been dealing with the pandemic and declining enrollment. Uh, we've now hit every month since the start of the year, we've continued to see a decline. And as of January 31st, we, our, our enrollment decreased, uh, by 21 more students throughout the district and we're down 400 students since June of 2020. Our total enrollment, including the charter schools is now 3,540 and not including the charter schools, 3,286. We did have a meeting, uh, our bi-weekly meeting with ODE, our Business Officials Association. Not last Friday, the Friday before. And we, I specifically asked the question again about is there more serious talk about a potential hold harmless situation for enrollment due to the pandemic? And they said that it has been brought as a priority to the legislature and the governor to discuss during the legislative session. But that's as far as it's gone at this point. So I will continue to ask that question every other week, if not more, because it's a very serious situation that would be, we would be subject to. we would be subject to, you know, if, if we don't get our full slate of, of students, students back, if we don't know what situation will be to start next year, you know, we'll, we'll have whatever, our funding will be based on next year's enrollment or this year, whichever is greater. So again, I think there's, there's going to be conversations about possibly throwing this year out. And maybe, I mean, the easy solution would be basing it on 21, 22 enrollment or 19, 20, whichever is greater. But, but again, there's still a couple of months to talk about that at the Capitol. So as far as budgeting is concerned, I've decided we need to go with three different enrollment and revenue scenarios and build a proposed budget based off of those three scenarios. And we get, when we get towards the end of, of April, enroll this out to the Budget Committee, we'll have to select one of those scenarios to go with based on the information that we have. And, you know, hopefully over the, the next two months, we'll definitely learn quite a bit more. We haven't even seen the co-chairs budget yet. So when we meet again on March 8th, I should have more information. And we should have that co-chairs budget as well. So that's what we're going to start with at this point, because that's all the information that we have. The other part of the, the pandemic has been federal stimulus funding. And we've, we've talked about that quite a bit. We did receive a word just over a week ago, what our S R 2 funding will be. This is funds out of the stimulus package passed at the end of December. And that, that came through the state. It was just under $500 million for K, for Oregon K-12. Our, our S R 2 allocation is $1,426,000. And that money is available to us through September 30th, 2023. Its uses are, approved uses are similar to S R 1 dollars. Could be PPE, cleaning equipment and supplies, technology. But they're also highlighting extra custodial help as we're trying to reopen for the strict cleaning measures that we have, as well as some more investment in ventilation upgrades or filtration systems. So those are just some additional scopes that they are highlighting with this. So we are looking at those things. We've actually posted some temporary positions for some extra custodial help. Those, those were posted here two weeks ago. So that's, that's a step that we're taking. Just to review, the CARES Act stimulus funding resulted in two different buckets of, of dollars that were the S R dollars, which they're now calling S R 1. That was $362,000 for our district. And then we had the gear money, which was discretionary funds that the governor decided how to allocate, which resulted in our CDL, our Comprehensive Distance Learning Grant. That was $131,000. That $493,000 has already been spent. And I do plan on doing a one-page report for the March 8th board meeting to show how that money was spent and out of which bucket. But the verbal summary of those funds is that that purchased Canvas, Edge Annuity, both some additional iPads and Chromebooks, connectivity, especially hotspots. And also there was $20,000 passed through to the two charter schools, about $10,000 apiece. So the charter schools will also get some of the, of the new allocation as well. In addition, we've, we've purchased quite a bit of, of PPE and cleaning supplies. And that has been routed through to this point to the FEMA arm of some, some stimuli or COVID relief. We have not received any reimbursement yet, but we've been working hard with the representative on the East Coast. It just takes a while to, to get through their processes. There's a lot of, a lot of layers to get through there. So we've been working hard on there. So that's a summary of stimulus funding. This is kind of part two or three, however you want to look at it. And like I said, I'll, I'll do a separate one-page summary for you so that can be a little more easy to follow than me just, just verbally reciting that next month. Any questions on the stimulus funding specifically? Okay. I am excited to report that last week, we had our first finance work group meeting. Jonathan and Janet are the board representatives on the work group. And we met to talk about the basic structure, the goals of the work group, hot topics, those types of things. And we decided through the budget season, we will be meeting once a month on the second Tuesday of each month for an hour or possibly 90, 90 minutes, depending on the agenda. And then after that, once we get into the summer, the, the basic format would be every other month or more frequently as needed. We will be adding two Budget Committee members starting for the March meeting. So I will be reaching out to them this week to gauge interest and go from there. So we're excited that we've started that conversation. Basically, it will give us the opportunity to dive a little bit deeper and on certain topics and keep dialogue rolling at a little deeper level, more consistently than what we have time for at a, at a board meeting. So, and I know Jonathan or Janet might be speaking to the first meeting in their board, board, board reports tonight. Last but not least, there's been talk amongst the business official and OSBA circles about the potential for another round of Pers Barnes to help prepay district UAL, unfunded actuarial liability. As you know, the system remains underfunded. And this started nearly 20 years ago. It's hard to believe. I was actually starting my K-12 business official career at that point. But there were some districts that did, these are pooled offerings. We would not be on our own. It would be for districts that were, that are also interested in this. But Silver Falls did specifically an issue in 2003 and 2004 and has, has done well with those, those offerings. And there were different ones that were done over the the last 20 years, over different periods of time. But basically, the rate climate, which is based on the Treasury, I think it's, well, they, they look at the 10 and 30-year Treasury, but it's usually a 20 or 25-year issue. Those rates are still very favorable, like they were when we refinanced our general obligation bond debt back in September. So things can still change, of course, but we were given, we, a study was done for interested districts by Eco Northwest and presented to us two weeks ago. And it's definitely worth getting a district analysis done. So we've, we signed up for, for the district analysis. There's no future obligation. But we should have that back to us by March 2nd. And I should have more to report to the board by March 8th. But basically, it's an opportunity to sell bonds. Right now, the borrowing rate would be projected to be about 3.5%. And basically, that money is sent to Pers to pay our part of the system UAL. And over the 20 years, the goal would be to, to, to save money. And essentially, our employer rates would be less than districts that didn't borrow, like it is right now, actually, for us. So anyway, there's a lot to, to, a lot of, a lot to be looked at there. We need to see our, our own district analysis. And there would be more to, more to explain, more to talk about. Essentially, if we thought that it was the right thing to do, it would have to come to the board for more discussion and board approval via resolution, like we did for the general obligation bond. But I wanted to make you all aware that that is in discussion and that I'll have more to share at the next board meeting. And that's it for tonight. Any, any questions on, on anything that I covered?
Yeah, Steve, I got a question.
Yeah, get on.
Yeah, back to the enrollment numbers. We're down about 400 kids right now.
Yes.
You know, how many of those are kindergartners that folks may have just chose to hold back and we're going to see them come back next year? That's an easy number to possibly predict.
Exactly. Yeah, it's a great question. The, the sheet that I have that I posted actually is just school by school and not by grade. I don't have that one up in front of me, but I know off memory, Mark Twain usually has 120 kindergartners. They only have 60 this year. Kindergarten is definitely the grade that has a higher percentage decrease because many families just decided not to start their children in their, their K-12 career in a virtual environment.
Okay, so, so a portion of that, obviously, some folks have disenrolled, but some people may be just kindergarten, you know, they just chose to wait one year. Yeah, that's a portion. Okay. Well, we'll see next year, hopefully. So.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Steve. I'll, I'll just mention, you know, Janet and I did join at that first meeting of the, of the work group, and it was fantastic. We did get a chance to dive into some of these topics. And, and I think it's going to be really valuable. Janet, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add.
All right, I didn't, I didn't hear you real well there, Jonathan, at the end. No, I think, I thought it was great. And it's a, and it's a really a good opportunity for us to give feedback to Steve about certain areas that get really weedy. And it's hard for us sometimes to be able to ask those questions in the board meeting because some of this stuff is, you know, is, is pretty technical. And so if, if we can listen to Steve and go, that's confusing, you're going to need to really explain that. I think that'll be, I think that'll be helpful. And then, obviously, you know, if, if Jonathan and I can serve as an additional resource, then we're happy to do that. So yeah, I really look forward to it. I think it's a, it's a great, it's a great thing. And we'll look forward to, to non-board member, Budget Committee members joining us.
Well, thank you, everybody.
All right. Well, thanks, Steve. So that moves us into our discussion items. And first up, we have a resolution proclaiming March 1st through 5th as Classified Employee Appreciation Week. And the, the votes a little later on in the action items. But, you know, I thought we'd give the, the board a chance to discuss their thoughts on it before we get to the actual vote, if you'd like. Any board members want to share their thoughts on this? I'll read it a little bit later.
I'll go first, Jonathan. Yeah, I, Michelle just did a great job at just going through every group and all the things they do. I just really appreciate listening to that every, you know, they're, they're the folks that are behind the scenes. We don't always see them. They're not, they're on the front lines, but they're the, you know, they keep the lights on. And then especially the, the video's going right now. So yeah, yeah, thanks. You know, just kudos to Michelle for that great recap for everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Yes, Jennifer.
Just three words, flexibility, dedication, and smile. Those come to mind when I'm thinking about classifieds this, this school year.
I know that, you know, I, I've heard a lot of stories this year as it relates to the pandemic and all the challenges. And a lot of them, I mean, maybe most of them involve classified staff at some level. And that's just really impressed me. I mean, the stories, you, you can't hear that many without knowing how dedicated they are to the students that they're serving. And I really appreciate it.
I just want to agree with, you know, my other board members. But I also wanted to state that it's really, really nice to have a standing agenda item for them to come and talk with us. I love it when Michelle comes and talks about the classified staff, what they're doing, what's happening. Because we don't always hear about that. And so these are, or, you know, what they're doing. It's, it's just so wonderful to have that healthy relationship with them. So yeah, they're, you know, they're here. I'm just glad every month. So, thank you.
Oh, go ahead, Janet.
No, I was going to say a quick word about the privilege of being able to be part of those regular classified communication. We used to call them labor management. Now they're communication meetings, which is great. And it's been a real pleasure to, to watch their OCA reps work. They are really an incredible group. And they really do a great job representing their folks. And it's just a fantastic opportunity for us to sit together and work through things before they get problematic. And that's just such a healthy way to work together and to dialogue. And I, I think, I think they, well, Michelle even indicated, I think they appreciate that too and, and see the real fruit of it. So I just wanted to give a shout out to them. They really are a great group of people. And, and we get a chance to see, you know, well, I do, a chance to see all of the different ways that, that our classified staff contribute to our district and contribute to the, our students' learning experiences. So, yeah, just many thanks and a lot of gratitude.
I'm going to take just a minute here, and I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution. We'll vote on it a little bit later in the action items. So this is with regard to Classified Employee Appreciation Week. Whereas the education of youth is essential to the future of our community, state, country, and world. And whereas classified employees are the backbone of our public education system. And whereas classified employees work directly with students, teachers, administrators, parents, volunteers, business partners, and community members. And whereas classified employees support the smooth operation of offices, the safety and maintenance of buildings and property, healthy nutrition, district instructors. And whereas our community depends upon and trusts classified employees to serve students. And whereas classified employees with their diverse talents and true dedication nurture students throughout their school years. Now therefore be it resolved that the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors proclaims March 1st through 5th, 2021 to be Classified Employee Appreciation Week. And be it further resolved that the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors strongly encourages all members of our community to join in this, in this observance, recognizing the dedication and hard work of these individuals. So that's what we'll have a chance to vote on a little bit later. But again, thanks, guys. I really do appreciate it. Okay, there's no further discussion there. I'm going to move us into some of the additional discussion items. And we did agree at the beginning that we were going to move the first reading items that were on the agenda to the work session, or possibly later, depending on when the work group and/or administrative team has an opportunity to look them over a little bit more. As a result, we're going to focus instead on the second reading items. Does anybody, and, and I'm not going to read them all down the line, but does anybody have any specific discussion that they'd like to have regarding the, the various policies? Well, I'll read the name. So that's Policy AC Non-Discrimination, CCG Evaluation of Administrators, EBBB Injury Illness Reports, EEA Student Transportation, IGBA Students with Disabilities Identification Procedures, IGBAH Special Education Valuation Procedures, IGBAJ Special Education Free Appropriate Public Education. No? Okay.
Sorry, I'm shuffling papers. You're going too fast for me. Um, I do have a couple tiny corrections. I will send those to Debbie. I did want to point out that on the Student Transportation Services one, which is EEA or EAB, not entirely sure which. I think we pointed out last time that the first sentence was a little problematic. It's a little confusing. So I just marked that again. And I'll, I'll, I'll send that over to Debbie. I think, other than that, there were a couple corrections to the Injury Illness Reports policy. Other than that, I have no substantive concerns.
Right. With that being said, we did add a discussion element as well tonight. And the topic is to consider With that being said, we did add a discussion element as well tonight, and the topic is to consider drafting a resolution or letter to send to state officials regarding the metrics and the need to alter them to get students in schools faster. Did I have that about right, Tom?
Yes.
So I'd like to open up the discussion and to make sure that we have the chance to share our thoughts on this, what would possibly, you know, be how we would go about approving one, the timing of it, things like that. Those are the types of things that come to mind to me as it relates to the topic that Tom brought up.
I guess I'll go first because I brought it up. Mine is just, I feel that, you know, the, the students, the students are bearing too, too, they're bearing too much of the weight of this, of the COVID regulations. And I'd like to encourage the state to ease the metrics and allow some easier opening up. And that's really about it, because something along those lines. Now, it's not the time to discuss it, but, you know, let everybody give their feelings, but I'm for tabling this to the next meeting, and we'll, we can all be ready for it properly.
Yeah, Jennifer.
I guess the contribution I want to make tonight is just the idea of, you know, how is this going to work? Like, does Tom want to bring a letter for us to consider so that we're not starting from scratch? And, or, or something else? I don't know. I'm just concerned about process so that we can be as effective as possible during the work session.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's something I thought I would do, yes. And it would be reflective of the fact that we're kind of a divided board and a divided community. No, no sharp edges. Just our thoughts and concerns. See if we can come to coalesce as a board on where we feel on this. Send our thoughts in. So, yeah, I can draft something pretty simple. I certainly don't anticipate a lengthy document, just, you know, four or five bullet points, something like that. But that's, that's, that's my thought. If someone wants to bring in something different, I guess we can smith it around, you know, and maybe we won't get there, but, but we can certainly have a discussion.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the questions I have is around the logistics of it, you know. Ray brought up during public comment the idea that, you know, actioning something in a work session, a challenge, or can be perceived as a challenge. We don't historically do it unless it's timely. This could be perceived as timely in my mind, you know, waiting another full month. Okay, you know, but. I guess, in short, I tend to agree, right, that there is a challenge here for us. I think one of the things that weighs on my mind is Steve was sharing the enrollment numbers. You know, this isn't even necessarily just about kids, you know, trying to get back into hybrid in a few months. This, I think, it's just as important to ask the question, when are we getting back to kids five days a week in a classroom? And what's going to happen if we start in September? Without hybrid is that, I mean, we've had enrollment problems this year. I know a number of people who are highly considering if, if we're not five days a week in September, they're already looking into private schools, right? They're, they're saying, you know, I'll find some other mechanism to, to get my kids educated. So I think there's a lot here. And, and I guess I do agree, Tom, that, that the way this has been handled at the state level has not been effective for our kids.
It's hard. So, I mean, Jonathan, can we? Should I contact you? Should you contact OSBA to make sure? How, I don't know what's the proper way to do this. Do I start with one? Does anybody start with one? This is a really difficult, where does it start from?
There's nothing with a draft, right? So we can certainly start with a draft. You're welcome to draft that.
I'll draft it up, and I, yeah.
Is just like all the other things that we do. We talk about it, and eventually we'll get to a point where we try to action it. And, you know, we'll take amendments or motions to modify and things like that. Again, part of my question is, do we do it at the work session, or do we wait until a month from now? I think that's where we're working. So that's one of my big questions.
I, I think time is of the essence, and I, and I think it was my thing, my. You know, my, my thinking is, I want to make sure they give, there's still a lot of uncertainties in these reopening metrics and how it's going to go, and things might change. I just want to give our, maybe give our staff some more certainty on what they can plan for. I don't, I'm still a little nervous about that April opening date for the high school.
Shelley, I think you had your hand up. Yeah.
I think, so I understand where you're coming from with this. I, I, I do like the idea of, you know, talking about it, possibly sending a letter. The numbers are going down in our counties from what Scott showed us earlier. And by the time, like, say you brought a resolution to the work session, you know, at the end of February, and we rattle around with it. And then we decide, you know, to take action in the March, March board meeting. Knowing that we have a resolution or letter to be sent. You know, K through five is starting back at the mid-March, I believe. Is this more for the high school kids, or is it more for just in general? Or for, for next fall? You know, trying to get our kids, I guess I'm, I'm trying to find out how can we can be as effective as possible, you know, if we decide to do this. Is it just for the short term, or is it, are we saying, okay, let's, let's get these, you know, we're pushing, our board is pushing for numbers for next fall? I, you know what I mean?
Like, right, I, I think, Shelley, I think, you know, you gave a list there, and I would say yes to everyone.
I guess that's what's going through my head.
I would like to see that the importance of reopening schools to be a more stable possibility, I think, you know. Doggone it, I can, I can get on an airplane and ride through your breast right now. But we can't open schools. You can go to your local adult beverage place and sit right next to three other people and play video lottery. With, you know, things are returning, and yet we see, we're still pretty. The schools are the place where they're the hardest. Well, okay, and I think y'all get my point. So things are opening up. Shopping malls are open. Things are, I'd like to, anyway, I think you get my point. I mean, you know, I don't, I don't want it to be sharp. But, general statements, no sharp edges. You know, I'm thinking the simpler the better.
I think, so I think my biggest concern with doing this as a board is I want, I want Scott's support for this. And, and, you know, they're, they're, from, from his, from his presentation tonight. It, there's so many complexities that have to be addressed. You know, transportation cleanliness, you know, all the way down to cleaning balls and bats if kids are playing with them. Do we? Do, you know, I guess I don't want to make it harder for him and his, his administration. You know, to open up schools when they might not have the staff. I know Steve mentioned that there's some job openings. They posted some job openings for custodians. You know, and, and also, do we write a letter to the governor and ODE? You know, the governor said, open schools by January fifteenth. Well, there's a, there's strings attached to that. So really, it's ODE that we need to write to, you know, to say, drop the strings. I don't know. I want this, I. I'm, I'm fifty-fifty, really, you know. I want, my daughter's a senior. You know, I want my kids back in school as much as the, as the rest of everybody. For sure. But I also need to know that our superintendent and his administration, um, you know.
I'd like to ask Scott.
Yeah.
I know I have a few feelings, but if Scott wants to say something first, go right ahead.
Well, the first thing that I would say is that, you know, we, we are, we are at your service. We serve it for pleasure. We serve it the pleasure of the board. And so, and I think that some of this advocacy needs to be brought to the governor. The governor appoints the executive director of ODE. And, and this is, you know, you're elected by your constituency. So I think this is totally appropriate that, that if that's what you're considering. We're prepared to act on, on whatever comes to us by way of metrics or metrics changes. We've done that all year. Every time something changed, we, we can reorder our plans. So it's important to realize that from an operational side, we take our direction from you as a board, but also from the Oregon Department of Education, because we're a public institution. So should that change, then we will execute the orders that were given to the best of our ability. And so I think, you know, as far as I'm concerned, and I think I speak for my team as well, that should those metrics change, then we would be more than ready to take on that challenge to, to, to try to, to try to implement that change. I personally, as a superintendent, I don't have the personal luxury of letting my own opinions come into this work. My job is to serve the community of Silver Falls. And, and, and we were at your service as well. So, so what I can say with confidence is that we can take whatever comes down the road by way of changes to metrics, if that's what we're advocating for, and, and we can execute that. It's not to say I don't have my personal opinions, but I have to look at it globally in terms of what you want as a board as well.
Yeah.
Did any one of my team want to speak to that? Nope. Okay.
Lori, go ahead if you'd like to.
Yeah, sorry, I, I was running low on power, and I think you probably heard some background noise of something dropping on the floor. I apologize. I just want to say that to Tom, I understand what you're saying. And, and it, my personal feeling is, as a board member, as a person, is that I don't want to do anything that starts to undermine what our superintendent is doing. And I have been impressed and with what our superintendent is doing. The communication, constantly touching base, explaining the metrics, the fact that we are in different counties. Really does work into that. And I, and I think another point that you brought up, Tom, and this is a sensitive one, it's about being a divided board. And I personally am not really comfortable, I'll just flat out, at this time about a resolution in that way. In my opinion, we're dealing with a global pandemic, and our health is priceless. And we, I believe, as a district and as human beings, want to do the utmost, not only for these young students, but also to be highly responsible and accountable. And it's, it's a double-edged sword. I mean, I would love to see the schools open again. But I'm, my heart's pretty heavy right now with what has been going on and what COVID has done globally to people. And I'm grateful that the metrics seem to be in a decline. But I, I do believe we have to, to think about supporting our superintendent and what is the absolute best decision, because now we're getting into, I guess, making a public stance, if you will, on the metrics. So, that's my opinion.
Thanks, Lori. I, I think, I, I didn't hear Scott indicate that we would be undermining him in any way, should we advocate in this manner. Scott, do you want to speak to that at all?
No, I don't, I don't think so at all. I think, you know, that part of board work is advocacy. And, and, you know, I think that that's, that's the way we do things in the public sector, if we want to advocate for, for change. And you as elected officials are, are, you know, welcome to do that. And so, no, it wouldn't. I would just want to know, you know, as soon as possible, what the plan is. So we can get moving quickly, because right now we have a plan. We intend to work that plan. We intend to stick to our timelines, should any of that change.
Thanks.
Um, so, a couple thoughts. One, I, I, I see, you know, that the district has a trajectory.
Right.
And like Lori, I think it's potentially complicating to switch that up. Either to accelerate it or to change course. I don't particularly, I don't know exactly what we're asking for, and I think this is where maybe Shelley was going. It looks like we're on track to open those elementary schools pretty quickly, that we meet those metrics. I don't necessarily see how we accelerate the high school, even if we were allowed to, just by virtue of their scheduling.
Correct.
So, so I'm not really sure what it is we're asking for, given that we are, we are moving pretty quickly and very decisively towards reopening. And then the final thing is just a hesitancy on my part to play public health expert. When I don't have the kind of data that allows me to say that the metric of two hundred per one hundred thousand is inappropriate. That's not my expertise, and I rely on ODE and, and OHA to make those decisions. And so I guess it's a combination of things. It's, it's one, I trust that those decisions were made very thoughtfully, and that they're there for a reason. And then secondarily, you know, what would we do differently if we could? I feel like Scott and his team are being as aggressive as they can safely be. I'm very comfortable with their plan. I also have a senior and would love nothing more than to have him have a senior year, but that's just not the world we're in. So that, that's where I am, I guess.
Thanks, Jennifer.
I do want to say that I agree with Janet on the, we trust the public health authorities business, because that's, that's pretty important, I think. I also wanted to say, talk about timing. It could be that we start the, meeting the metrics very soon before we can even take any action. Although there's one thing that's kind of sticking in my craw that I'd like to let the governor know, and this wasn't part of Tom's vision. But the whole idea of, you know, dropping at the turn of the year, this idea that we have to simultaneously offer both the CDL and the hybrid track. That totally threw a monkey wrench in the district's plan. And I want her to know that, or ODE to know that, because that is causing significant just angst and trouble, and, you know, that's kind of, yeah, that's, that's the part that I selfishly want to get in there, but I don't care. You know, I'm willing to consider whatever, but that, those are just, just my ideas.
Yeah, yeah, I, one big, one last point. I mean, my, my, my biggest concern is that, that charts go up. Charts go up, charts go down, metrics go up, metrics go down. I'm concerned that. I'm concerned that that April twenty sixth date might not, the metrics might not be there. Just because things go down and things go up sometimes. And so. You know, my, the job isn't to. Change something and then make the school district pivot on a dime and order them to do something. I, I want to make sure some, a few, if a few more strings can get cut to make sure. Schools can reopen. When they want to confidently and land, you know, land, land the plan that, that we've got so far. That's, you know, and. You know, and basically just, and, and say, I, and state that I feel that the students. Have suffered more than their fair share. And I think we need to get things going here. So.
Yeah, you know, a couple of things struck me as, as we were having this conversation, okay, Karen, you know, there's a plan, we're going to reopen soon, we're going to meet the metrics. But I don't want anybody to forget, we're only talking about hybrid. We're talking two days a week. Not three, not four, not five. This is hybrid. Still a significantly inferior instructional model. And so I'm not satisfied personally that that's a bar we ought to be resting our hat on and saying, hey, great, we made it, right? I don't, that's not how I'm looking for it. So when I start talking about advocating for metric modification, I'm thinking way past. This, this staggered hybrid opening, you know, with the two hundred and the three fifty metric. I'm thinking, we never had kids in school, right? I was reading a study recently and I think it said thirty five percent of schools in the nation. Are open five days a week. And a similar number was, was open in hybrid and something in the neighborhood of twenty eight percent, I think, were. Comprehensive. And this was, that's up several weeks ago. But. You know, I'm, anyway. I, my view is if we don't see ma- major changes to the point where we can trust that we're going to be in school in September. I think those enrollment numbers are going to get a lot worse. And I think that's something this district ought to pay attention to as well, that has a major. Invitation. I've, I've got a lot of things in my mind too that are rattling around.
So, okay, um. Mr., I moved that we table this, this, um, table this discussion till. Um. Uh, our next work session and bring it up then and try to draft a resolution there.
Hmm.
Okay. One point of clarification on your motion, please. Is that to, uh, action it at the work session or, or, or no? Because that was a point of clarification that came up.
Trying to think how that works. I mean. I'd certainly like to try to get something out next work session, but if, if we don't, we can table it or just scrap it, I suppose. Um.
Can I, can I say something really quick after hearing? Multiple, um, thoughts. I, um. I guess I would like to, to see where. You know, I, I don't think anything's going to change if we send out a letter in four weeks. To O D E or the governor. Um, for this year. I just, I don't see that. Um. But I do see something, you know, that could be effective for the fall. Um, and I'm not sure that writing a resolution now, based on information now. Um, is going to make much difference in. What's going to be happening in the next few months. Um, but I can see relevance for the fall. And I think maybe this, this topic could be brought up. You know, maybe in. You know, A- April or May. For the fall. Um, and see what information is there. See where the numbers are. See if the metrics have changed, you know, for the fall. Um. You know. I just, I think it's a. I think it's a little late for this year. But I'm willing to consider it for the fall. For sure. So that's my thought. I, I don't want to do that. I don't want to do a resolution now. I wouldn't vote for that.
I want to circle back real quick to Tom. He, he was making a motion and I was just asking, so I want to let that. Play itself. Um. Just can, if you could clarify your motion, Tom, indicating a preference regarding, uh. The urgency element of it. I think that would help. Then, then when people vote, they know kind of what they're, what they're aiming for.
Yeah, yeah, um. I'm just trying to think if it's appropriate to say that we're going to actually draft a resolution in the next, in the next. Meeting, um.
Point of information.
Yeah.
Wouldn't this be something to put in the future agenda items request? Part of our agenda?
We, we could, we could go there as well, Jennifer. I don't think there's a wrong answer here. I mean, if the board wanted to. Move that we table this. And bring it up in the work session, we could do it now too, like. But, um.
Okay.
But we can also finish our discussion here and. I, I think more than anything, I'm looking for some guidance here. You know, I know that there's been. Well, lots shared on this. And if it's going to show up on the agenda. In two weeks, then I need to know, are we discussing it again? Or we're starting with a graph? Sounds like that's a possibility. Are we hoping to action it? And if we were, that would be because it's timely. Um, if we aren't, then it'd be just a discussion to try to agree on a graph. Maybe as a, and then finalize it in another few weeks. So those are the things I'm trying to finish in this discussion element here before we. We.
Yeah, I guess Jonathan, I. Yeah, I mean, I, I get, I guess my proposal is to put it on the next work session. As an action item. And if we can word twist, miss something that we all agree upon, we can take action on it. Or we can take action on it and fail, or we can table it to the next meeting, you know, but I would say put it on as an action item and see where it goes.
Thank you. I'm going to accept that as a motion with that verification. Any seconds to Tom's motion to add it as a, as an actionable agenda item in the work session, a possibly action.
Jonathan, I am having a little trouble hearing you. Just. I don't know if there's anything you can do. I don't know if anyone else is having trouble. It might just be me.
Yeah. Same.
All right, guys, yeah. Probably nothing I'm going to do about.
So where, I'm sorry, where are we then? What do?
Wait, um, waiting for a second and I think it's about to fail.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and second it. So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any? Further discussion?
Well, I just want to appreciate that it sounds like Jonathan and Shelley are thinking future oriented. And, um, it sounds like Janet and Lori are pretty hesitant. Um, I'm open. Tom's ready to go. It feels like we're not all landing on the same spot at this point. Um, and so I just wonder if it is something that we. I mean, I'm fine. I'm fine considering something at the, at the board, uh, the work session. And I can also see. Um, Shelley's suggestion of waiting a little bit to see how things are shaking out and being more future. You know, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two oriented.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think we should take action in, in a work session if we can avoid it. So I guess I would be, and I, and I may not have caught all of the, the wording of what the ultimate motion was, but. I would be willing to discuss it at the work session, but I won't, I wouldn't be supportive of taking action at that time.
Right. So the motion on the floor was to add it as a discussion item, table it essentially for tonight. Uh, bring back a draft of the work session. And to have the option that night of voting on it or cabling it yet again to. With the next meeting. I think that's essentially where we were saying, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what's being moved and seconded. Any further discussion before we call the vote? Okay. So, uh, Debbie. Debbie there.
Yeah, I'm just having trouble there. Sorry. Jonathan.
I'm going to vote yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Shelley?
No.
Earth?
Yeah.
Yes or no, Earth?
Yes.
Thank you. Six to one, the motion.
My connection too here. I don't know what's going on.
Six to one, motion passes.
Debbie. All right, thank you, everybody. So we'll have it on the agenda for the work session. You can. Get some draft. Word and all that. Okay. With that, we will move to our second public comment. Or is anybody, has anybody asked to speak during the second public comment?
No. Hmm.
Um, well. This is a reminder to everybody, if you'd like to, uh, by all means, please mail Debbie real quick. I'll give it another, you know, thirty seconds. Anything, Debbie?
No.
All right, well, we're going to move into our action item and then Debbie, if one happens to roll in. Uh. In the next minute or so, I, I'm willing to circle back, but at the moment we'll move on to action. So. Uh, we do have one, which is the, uh, resolution for claiming March first through fifth. As classified employee week. I've read the resolution. We've had some discussion. At this point, I would accept the motion to approve that.
I move to adopt resolution two eight twenty twenty one proclaiming March first through fifth as classified employee week.
Move.
I submit.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Jonathan?
Yeah.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Janet? Or yes? Tom?
Hi.
Lori?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Earth?
Yes.
All in favor?
Great. Okay, did you? Any requests?
I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you. No, no others. What you're saying.
Okay, very good. Uh, with that, we have item fifteen, future agenda item request. This is sort of the new one that we talked about a little bit. In chance, if you have something you'd like to bring up publicly as a request, uh, you can kind of do so now. We're not going to, you know, drill in and try to. You know, take up, well, we're not even going to poll it or vote on it. We're just sort of bringing it up. But it's open forum. So if anybody has anything, raise your hand and just speak up.
I'd like to make a request that we, for a future agenda item, um, to discuss the agenda template. Um, and. Talk about specific items that have been taken off, that have been on the board. Agenda for a while, which is board correspondence and board reports.
Any other?
Okay. I feel like I'm going to be redundant. But, uh, for future agenda items, I too would like to. Um, I appreciate what Dr. Kizer said regarding, um, correspondence. I think that's a good transparency step, and I think it is worth discussing. The other thing is too, I'd like a little bit of clarity of. As a board, how we can probably, we are a divided board. And I'm not sure what that looks like, if that's. But it, it does concern me because it. We want to really listen to our public and keep the trust strong with our community. And we may want to, I would say, yeah, we should discuss that. Um, and I think it was. It stood out to me at the last meeting when we had a three, four on an agenda template, um, during a work session. So. I'd like to revisit that, maybe add another work session in the future.
Thank you. Right, well, with that, if there's no other items, we are going to move into executive session. Under, uh, statute or S one nine two six six zero two F. Consider information on records that are exempt by law from public inspection. This case, it's a sick leave bank request. And O R S one nine two six six two six six zero two D. To conduct deliberations with persons designated by the government body to carry on the movement. And with that declaration, uh, everybody needs to, as I understand it, and correct me if I am wrong, please, Derek. We're going to disconnect from our Zoom meeting and rejoin in the other meet that was sent an email by Debbie.
So point of information, do we have an estimate of time for the people who are in, um, this Zoom?
I would say I would, I would estimate. Fifteen to twenty minutes.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Right, see you in a bit. All right, well, with that, let's return to regular open session. And we have one item, which is the consideration of the sick leave bank request. At this point, I would accept a motion. Uh, regarding that.
I move to approve the sick leave bank request for up to fifty days for employee Ira Jackson.
So moved.
I second it.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Debbie, would you please take the vote?
Uh, Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Earth?
Yes.
All in favor?
Very good. Right, well, thanks, everybody. Uh, without objection, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.